Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could please stand for the invocation, Commissioner Humphreys will say the blessing. Thank you.
Lord, we thank you for our blessings and for the wonderful life you've given us here on this beautiful island. Please help us make wise decisions and to live in your way always. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Okay, let me just make an announcement about the agenda. If you are here to hear about the Fifty Oaks Plumary Platt, that is off the agenda tonight. And you're welcome to be to leave if you'd like. We had a couple of other items. I think your printed copy is correct, other than that? Is that right? Okay. All right, let me just quickly review our procedures. I won't go through the long list. Most of you are aware of them. I'd just like to take a moment and remind us that the public hearings and public comments will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five allocated to each speaker. We have a timer tonight, by the way. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to represent your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. We have three sets of meeting minutes to approve, and we're going to take those one by one because there may be some modifications requested. So the first one is the minutes from the special called meeting. Oh, sorry.
Yes, the first one's regular meeting.
Okay, the regular meeting held in February 20th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that the minutes of the February 20 meeting be approved.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the record, please show those as being approved. The next set of minutes were the special meeting, and that was for March 6. Do I have that? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve those as recorded?
So moved.
A second, please.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining because I was not present at that meeting.
Okay. All others approve? Okay, let the record show, six to one approved. The one that's abstaining, thank you. And finally, the work session, which was, what was that date?
April 2nd.
Thank you. April 2nd. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as currently drafted?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes stand approved.
A second, thank you. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, a brief comment about the minutes, please.
Sorry, sure.
Yes, and I again want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity for this board to have these work sessions. I would note that in the discussion that we had at that meeting, that there were specific suggestions were made on a number of process items. I feel these should be recorded in the minutes for the record and for future consideration so they don't drop off the table. For example, Denise Krobowski made the suggestion that we hold a discussion about strategies for alternatives to development at a future session. The members present agreed that was a good idea. I think suggestions like that, that are specific, should be included in the minutes going forward, but I'm not asking that these minutes be modified.
Okay, point taken. Commissioner Meadows, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor as the minutes have been recorded, please raise your hand, say aye.
One abstention?
Two abstentions.
Okay, three abstentions, so four, three approved.
Two abstentions. Just Carla and myself.
Okay, sorry, make that five, two, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, just briefly, we have about six items having to do with the village. We've organized the agenda that we will address these village items first, and we have a few signage applications and three others in the village. And then we have the Forbes Farm. So let's start with the first application, VP 3723, 520 Ocean Boulevard, which is a design review approval of two new plaques. If we could have the staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So there was actually a correction to the staff report that had gone out in the packet. There was a revised staff report that had gone out. But this is for the Hodnet family. This is 520 Ocean Boulevard, and there are several businesses within this building. This is village mixed use and island preservation overlay, and use is commercial. And this is the property in the red bold outline right here. And initially, when this packet went out, it talked about two plaques on the existing monument, and actually, this was corrected to show that it's actually a wall sign that they are installing there. So on their front facade at the entrance to the building, they are doing a new wall sign for Berkshire Hathaway Home Services and Hodnet Cooper Real Estate. The dimensions are just under 24 square feet, which is the max for per sign in this area. And there is some existing signage on the site. There is one monument sign that does have three signed plaques on it for the Hodnet Cooper businesses. And then there, and then this, there was an existing wall sign that was on the building that was just basically refaced, and so that is currently exempt from island preservation design review. If you're doing a reface, you do have to do a sign permit, but you do not have to go through village preservation. And so this is really just one new sign. So what this shows in this picture, this is the wall as it was just really a few days ago, that this is where the sign will go. This is the main entrance. And then on the side is this existing monument sign down by Ocean Boulevard that has advertising for the three businesses. That is what the sign will look like. And then there are some performance standards and review criteria that the commission does look at. So just to be clear, the, I guess the authority of the planning commission is really design review of these specific standards and how you feel the sign meets those standards. If this does get approval from, the design gets approval from the Island Planning Commission, then their next step would be to apply for a sign permit, and that is an administrative review and approval process. And that is where staff will verify that the sign meets all of the criteria for size, placement on the site. So these are the standards that are also in your staff report of what you would be looking at for your review. And then your motions this evening on this would be to approve the application VP 3723. You can defer it for additional information, or you can move to deny VP 3723 based on failure to comply with this section of the code. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant may be present this evening as well if you have any questions with them. Not sure if they are.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Meadows?
Could you explain to us what the requirements and standards are for signs on walls?
So for wall signage, the code does have a percentage of coverage, so 25% of the facade is what the requirement is, as well as a limit of 24 square feet per sign.
Is there some reason why the information that we get in our packets would not include what the standard requirements are so that we can evaluate the proposal against the requirements?
Sure, I mean, it's something we did, we did touch on in terms of the 24 square feet, but basically, the concept is that the review is really for the design of the sign. So if the sign has any issues with the exact square footage or coverage, I mean, that is something that we do deal with in the administrative review of the sign permit. However, I agree it's helpful to have that information so the commission knows how this sign meets it, but that, but purely your review is design and how it meets the standards that are in the staff report.
So the information that we received in the packet says we're going to replace the existing plaques, and now we're going to add another sign that was not mentioned. What is it that we're being asked to vote on?
Sure, and that, as I stated before, this was a correction to the staff report. Initially, the staff report went out regarding the signed plaques, but I made a correction. There was something new that came out via email, plus it was on the website that did correct that. So what you are looking at this evening is this specific sign, just this one sign, and it would go in that location on the wall. The plaques have already been installed, and there was, you don't see it in this photo because they are currently, they took it down to reface it, but there is a reface of an existing sign that will go back up. So this wall will have two total signs, but only one needs to go through island preservation this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Stephanie, I'm sorry, but could you explain that again because, did you tell us that we don't need to act on the existing signs that were standing when I drove to the property on Sunday? That that's not what we're being asked to act on? I understand we're being asked to approve a new sign on the wall, and you're telling us that it meets the standards. What about the, I think you call them the plaques, that were out front by the parking lot?
Correct. So the way that we handle these are, if it is a reface, if there's an existing sign and it's being refaced with exactly the same size, but they're just refreshing it, replacing it, then that is exempt from village preservation. It does still require a sign permit that's administratively reviewed and approved, but it does not have to come in front of this board. So the existing monument that is by the road does have the three plaques, and that is existing. So that is not part of your review tonight. The only part of your review is one new wall sign on that wall.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Okay, being none, then we'll open this up for public comment. If we'll have any interested parties who want to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Oh, sorry, is the applicant here? Just saying, sir, are you the applicant?
I am not, but I've been asked to represent now.
Okay, all right, so let the record show. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, Chairman Duncan.
Pardon?
I'm Bruce Fendig with Fendig Signs.
Okay.
And Hodnet Cooper and Berkshire Hathaway has just come down here tonight.
They can't hear you, if you'll need to speak up in the microphone.
And I'm here to-
Is it turned on?
I don't know.
Tap it. It's on.
Maybe aim it, there you go, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Yes, I'm Bruce Fendig with Fendig Signs, and I've been asked to come down here and speak for the permit, for the applicant. We are the sign manufacturer for this application, and I'm here to ask you for your approval for the sign. I'd like to point out that they've been in this location for many years. They've been a landowner and a business in that location for a long time, and they're just now completing remodeling of their facility, and they are asking for this additional sign for that business, for the applied for in the permit.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Fendig.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
We will now reopen it for comments in favor of this application. Okay, seeing none, being none, we will then ask for any opposed for this sign application. Okay, we'll close public comment. Any questions or comments by staff, please? Or commission? All right, open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve application VP 3723.
A second, please.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Appears to be unanimous. Thank you. All right, second item, another signage application, 539 Ocean Boulevard. If we could please have the staff report.
So this is another village preservation, VP 3726. Ricardo Hurtado is the applicant. It's 539 Ocean Boulevard, and it is in the VMU Village Mixed Use and Island Preservation Overlay, and existing land use is commercial. And this property is right here on Ocean Boulevard. It is the Blue Bay Mexican Grill Restaurant, and the star is right over where the business is located. There are other businesses also in that building. So this is design review for one illuminated sign for Blue Bay Mexican Grill. And as some background for the commission's benefit, the applicant did install the sign prior to applying for village preservation review, and also prior to applying for a sign permit. So the sign has been erected on this property for some time. The applicant has indicated that the sign meets the sign code requirements of 24 square feet, as well as the percent of coverage, when measuring the signage wording only. However, their staff has had some question of that and wanted additional information from the applicant, and that has not been provided at this time. And as some additional background, this has been a code enforcement matter as well. So code enforcement has been working with this applicant, and as part of his right to exhaust his administrative remedies, he can come through village preservation and request approval for this design. So this is the one existing sign, and then there was also some neon signage in the windows that is not permitted. And I know he had mentioned last time I talked to him that he had turned those off, so. And so here's a photo that the applicant did submit, and as I noted, he did indicate it was 24 square feet, but staff has had some question about that, about that actually being the correct size. And so we, as I mentioned, we requested additional verification. We did not get that from the applicant, so we did have staff go out to the site and do a field verification, and this is really to the best of our ability. So it's approximately 62 square feet, which is quite a bit bigger than the 24 square feet allowed, and so that is an issue, and that's really where, from staff's perspective, as a commission, if you approve the design, the applicant, you know, would have the ability to look at his sign and try to have it meet the 24 square feet, but if he cannot, then that is not a project that could be approved at this point. But as I mentioned, he does have the right, as any applicant does, to make an application to village preservation to try to get approval, but it's not always an application that can be approved. And so really, so how staff feels at this point, although staff does not make recommendations to the Island Planning Commission per the Island Planning Commission's request in the past, I mean, I will say that this is not a project that currently meets the size requirements, but he is coming before you this evening. So at this point, here are your possible motions. You can approve the application, defer the application for additional information, and/or deny the application based on failure to comply with Section 709. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I didn't hear any discussion about the neon, but I couldn't, your sound system is awful. Did you discuss the neon?
It's turned off, you said.
Yeah. So there have been neon signs in the windows, and the applicant did say he recently turned those off. I have not been to the site to verify that, but he did state that he has turned them off. But that would not be part of, that would not be able to be approved because we do not allow neon.
Neon signs are not allowed in villages, is that correct?
That is correct, they are not allowed.
Any further questions?
Since the applicant went ahead, put the sign up prior to approval or anything, first of all, will there be a penalty for that? And since it is not, in other words, he has done everything he wanted to do prior to presenting it to staff and presenting it to the board here, while we discussing it, because he's done what he wants to do, now he wants it to stay, and then we go back and he be permitted to correct it as we go along. I don't see where that would be fair, and to me, seems as though we're setting a bad precedent in doing so.
Mr. Chair.
Sure. Commissioner Kate?
Also, you know, I agree with Adesha, they've already done it, and we just approved a change in a sign on a business that's been there for many, many years, and then we're presented with this application who has already gone and done what they wanted to do. Not only that, but you, the staff requested more information that they did not get. Therefore, our, this application is incomplete, I don't even know why it's on the agenda tonight.
Chair.
I'm the-
Sorry.
May I have-
No, sorry, you'll have a moment. Let us get through our questions, thank you.
I want to ask staff if we deny this application, that just means he could come back with an application that would hopefully be conformant to the ordinance.
Yeah, that is correct. So as I mentioned, this has been a code enforcement action. An applicant has a right to apply for this. We do do our best to get as much information as possible, but they do have a right to come before this board and request approval. So if this is denied this evening, the applicant does have the ability to go back to the drawing board, bring forward an application that does conform to the best that they feel it does, and come before this board to request a design review of that.
Okay.
You said that it is approximately 62 square feet. How did you verify that?
So that was a field verification that our staff did. So what they looked at was there are concrete blocks-
Could you just, sorry, could you just show that image?
Sure. This is probably the best one that shows that, but as I mentioned, the 24 square feet was what the applicant submitted. This is not staff's writing on this, but what they, what staff looked at was counting the concrete blocks, the size of each block, and then making their best guess from a visual. So this, it's approximate, it's the best field verification that we could do at this time. But ideally, you know, what we hope is, of course, that before an applicant puts up a sign, they come through this process, and we do have those specs from, you know, from a contractor, from a sign designer, but this is the best we could do. So 62 square feet is approximate, it could be off that.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? Mr. Meadows?
Stephanie, could you advise us as to what the penalties are for willful violation of the ordinance in the county ordinances?
Commissioners, the standard penalty for violation of a county ordinance is a misdemeanor, so the maximum fine is $1,000. Imprisonment of no more than six months is a possibility, but in my experience, a magistrate court judge has never sentenced anyone to jail for violation of a county ordinance, especially a zoning ordinance. But I think as, I'll let staff address this, but I think they have, they are enforcing it from a code enforcement standpoint in addition to bringing this application to you.
At our work session, we discussed specifically the kind of information that would be helpful to this board. When we're receiving material from, it would have been very helpful for us to have given, been given information about why this is in front of us when staff, and staff has explained that tonight, it would have been very useful. Based on what I see from the staff, there are at least, by my count, three violations with regarding to this particular enterprise. Would those be handled as separate violations, or would that be handled as one penalty?
I think it would-
Sorry, may I just draw a point of order? We're here to hear an application for the sign as designed. I understand there are issues, that there may have been ordinance violation. We're not the body to consider a violation. And to move on, I would ask that we table any of that kind of discussion for a future work session.
Let me ask, Mr. Chairman, who is responsible for maintaining the character of the historic
The responsibility of maintaining the character, I mean, it's a broad question. I mean, you could really say any property owner has that responsibility, but in terms of village preservation, I mean, any demolition, any new development, any new signage, anything, any really new improvements within that area or changes, does go before the Islands Planning Commission for that review.
So if we don't ask questions or look into the matter, then it sounds like no one else will. Mr. Chairman, if I may, please. I just came back from a visit to Gulf Shores, Alabama, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with Gulf Shores. It used to be recently a community that aspires to be kind of like we would like to be, which is a nice waterfront community with an inviting downtown district. And within the last five years, one by one, by variances, conditional use permits, and violations that were not enforced, they have now ruined their downtown to the point where property owners are leaving the community. I don't think members of this planning commission sitting here, any of us, would like to see that happen, and so when we see willful violations in front of us, I think, number one, we need to call it out, and we need to have a conversation about what do we do about it, and number two, I think we need to take effective action. Thank you.
I think code enforcement is the proper authority here. We're the planners, we're here to hear applications. If there's an existing violation, which there are probably many of on this island of some sort, the county has departments to deal with that. I don't think not talking about fines tonight implies that we're not interested in our community and the preservation of the village. I would just ask that we stay on target here with the agenda, and let's not get off on a tangent. Thank you. All right, we'll go into, we'll ask the, invite the applicant up, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ricardo Hurtado, and I'm the owner of Blue Bay Mexican- My name is Ricardo Hurtado, and I'm the owner of Blue Bay Mexican Grill. I would like to explain what happened and why was the sign put up. This is not recent, okay? We opened our doors last August. Since January of last year, we went through all the motions of getting the permits. May of last year, we applied for the permit for the sign. The person taking over our file left the county and also took the files. Nobody knows where the files are, they couldn't find them. So I was told by an official in county to go ahead and put up my sign and let the preservation committee come to me, which it was wrong, I don't know, but I followed directions, and now I'm being told that I'm in violation of several things following what the county asked me to do. All I'm asking is, if I have to remove the sign or make it smaller, I will, but I would like not to be judged on the way the sign came up because I was following orders from the county. The person working at the moment left and left everything in the wind. Nobody knows nothing about it, nobody took over her position until this young lady came aboard. She came aboard just recently after the sign was put up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think this just underlies the point, we're not a judging body, we don't assess fines, we're here to understand applications. Thank you for sharing that history with us. Any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
In the signage, it has two pieces to your sign. You have the mixed grill, and you have the name on the top. If you took the mixed grill off, would it then meet the requirement?
Yes, ma'am, we can make the sign fit the 24 square feet that they're asking for.
How would you do that?
By removing, let's say, the Mexican grill from the bottom, improving the word bay under blue, that would give us the exact measurement for what we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Sure.
So if the, if the staff, you know, kind of let it go, what led you to believe you could go ahead and put the sign up?
Well, we were opening our doors soon, and I was desperate to talk to somebody in the preservation committee, which nobody returned my calls. I went several times to their office, nobody was there to attend to me. One of the ladies working for there, she was the one that asked me to go ahead and just put up the sign and let them come to me later. And I have a name, it's not the proper place to do it. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, please? Mr. Meadows?
Thank you for your explanation. The community, I believe, welcomes your restaurant to the area. The question I had was, when you were opening your business, did you have an attorney who worked with you to help you through what the ordinance is, and how you're going to meet the health codes, and the building standards, and all of those sort of things?
I didn't have an attorney. I have a CPA who's taking care of my business, and even him filed for the permit for the preservation committee, but there was no answer. So I'm at fault for following somebody's advice, I'm responsible for that, and I take action on that, but then again, we couldn't wait forever to put up the sign, and I understand there's guides to be followed and rules, and believe me, I will abide to those rules to be part of the community. I don't want to be trouble in the community.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you, sir. We'll move to public comments. We'd invite anyone that would like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, being none, we'd ask those that might be opposed to this application, please come forward. Please state your name.
Hello, Commissioners Leece and Norton. I live in the Village area, and I was shocked when I went into the Village months ago, and this sign was illuminated already up in place, and I want to tell you, the light is garish, it's overpowering to the village, it is too large, and it gives the Village of Las Vegas appearance that I do not think we're after, and I ask that the permit be denied, and the applicant has admitted he was not using the proper tools, whether acquiring an attorney to help with this, a CPA certainly would not be the person for the job. He admitted that he could not wait forever, and in this county, we do have rules, we have ordinances, and I ask that this sign be removed, and it needs to be redesigned so that it is not a neon light, it is overpowering. And if you don't believe me, I ask you to let him throw the switch, drive down to the Village, and see what the appearance is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any others?
Yes, Julian Smith, I live on the island. I agree with Ms. Norton, and I am perplexed by the staff report. First, the last sentence in the project description tells us that staff has requested additional verification of the sign's size, and the applicant has submitted the photograph depicting the sign as meeting the 24 square feet, and it appears to be larger in size. I think you all had time, the staff had time, to get something more specific, and then the staff comment itself gives me heartburn. Here's the staff comment in bold letters. The signage is existing on the building and was installed prior to seeing Village Preservation Design Review. Prior to who seeing the Village Preservation Design Review, we're not told. I don't know what this has to do with what's before you tonight. That is, it explains something, but it doesn't. The next sentence tells us that staff does not feel this application meets the code due to the sign's size as being over 24 square feet in size. It's repetition of words, it's imprecise, it would have been much easier for someone to measure the thing and to put that measurement in this statement. One more thing, I don't want to hear what staff feels, except sick at heart listening to me. I'd like to know what staff believes, thinks of, and can demonstrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, please come forward, state your name.
Name is Chief Work, I'm a resident here on the island. Just a question, what is the type of lighting that's in the current sign there? Do we know?
I believe it's LED lighting.
Sir, keep your comments to comments. If you have a question, will, sorry, excuse me. We'll address any questions when you finish, but try to form your comments in a formal statement. Thank you.
The point I'm making is that we've specifically excluded neon lights in the village. Technology has progressed, and in my opinion, LED lights are more offensive in the wrong or any specific application. So I admonish the commission to take a look and broaden your look at the rules, and does this really meet the intent of what we have written in the ordinance? If you go to blind compliance, it's not a neon sign, and we can go forth with it, okay? Times Square, what the discussion we had, I think Mr. Meadows brought it up, about the Alabama coast, and I've spoken before, you folks, on what happened to Coronado Island in California, okay? It's no longer a tropical place to go, it has developed in less than 30 years from a desirable place to where folks are leaving, only the people with a lot of money that like high rises living there now, as opposed to the folks that dealt with it, okay? Small time. If this is LED, and they can exceed the lumens from a neon sign, I suggest you take a look at that in a broader view of what the ordinance says and what the intent of the ordinance is, and don't stand by a minimum compliance with the words of the ordinance. It's going to get us into trouble as time goes by. One other comment, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, while your comments were dead on about not, this not being the place to adjudicate fines and whatever, at least take the action from someone here to refer that to the appropriate people as a business of the IPC. Don't just let it lie and go out, okay? Not sure whether these folks pick it up and go forward with it for the code compliance folks, but at least as a county commission, you ought to be able to hand off to the responsible people as part of your business here, and you're right, it should not be addressed here in this form, so I would suggest you take that as an act.
Thank you. Any other comments opposed, please? Okay, all right, seeing none, being none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions or comments, please.
What is the, I use neon to cause, I don't know the difference between, what is the ordinance about illuminated signs?
Is your question about whether it's internally lit or just lighting in general for signs?
What does the ordinance say about having illuminated signs inside in or outside?
I'll have to check the code real quick.
Mr. Humphries, I can answer your question, I was looking at the provision myself. It's at Section 811.7 of the sign ordinance. There's a section that deals specifically with lights in this district, and it says that a sign may be illuminated as long as none of the following illuminating methods are used. Subsection A, moving, flashing, scintillating, or blinding signs. B, painted iridescent signs. C, daylight or dayglow fluorescent signs. D, signs utilizing lighting tubes or neon lighted tubes exposed to view. So those are the lighting types that are prohibited in this district. I think if y'all determine that a certain kind of sign is a blinding sign, then that would fit under this code. But again, back to Stephanie's point from the beginning, is I think those are also things that staff looks at when this sign permit comes in, in addition to the design criteria that y'all are being asked to look at for the Village Preservation District.
Further questions, Mr. Humphries? Okay. Other questions for, or comments? For staff or general?
Okay, part of that ordinance, Ms. Worley, that you read, it says daylight or dayglow fluorescent signs, and you also mentioned blinding signs. We have no, no information about the intensity of this sign in our report, so I don't know how we could determine whether it's a blinding sign or, you know, electronic variable thereof.
Well, that was my point in saying that these are things that are reviewed by staff when they come in, so y'all, under this section, what you're being asked to do tonight is you're looking at the aesthetics of the sign, essentially. How's it fit into the character of the neighborhood? These are the design criteria that staff looks at when the sign permit comes to them to make sure they're enforcing these technical criteria, if you will, of the ordinance. So I guess what I'm saying is, those things are reviewed by staff, and they would be, obviously, be getting more information about those kinds of things, you know, what are, what is the brightness of the sign, how are you planning on illuminating when someone applies for a sign permit, assuming that y'all approve a sign.
Okay, one of these criteria says signs utilizing lighting tubes. Does this sign utilize lighting tubes? If staff looked at this criteria?
So in terms of lighting tubes, typically those are exposed lighting tubes, I mean, this is an internally lit sign, but it would be different than what that's being referred to with the tubes.
Do we want to ask the applicant? Sir, could you offer any additional information relative to the type of lighting is used?
Yes, sir. It's LED light. What's inside, inside the sign is LED light.
LED.
LED. It's not neon or any other type of light.
No fluorescent?
No fluorescent, no.
No tubing?
No.
No tubing?
It's a very low voltage lighting, that's what they're using for signs now. And it's LED.
Right.
What are the hours that the sign is illuminated?
It's only in the evenings from 5:30 to 9 o'clock.
And then the sign goes off?
Then the sign goes off.
Any other questions, comments for the applicant or staff? Thank you, sir. So I'll open the floor up for any motions, please.
I move to defer application VP 3626 until the next regularly scheduled Islands Planning Commission meeting, and provide the following guidance to the applicant regarding revisions to the proposed project, that he remove the portion underneath that says the Mexican mixed grill, or the grill sign, and that you move the bay underneath the top part, and that you come into compliance with the 24 square feet, and if you can do that by your next meeting, I would defer, that would be my motion to defer based on that.
All those in favor of, sorry, discussion, yep?
Ms. Watson, did you address the illumination part?
I did not. I don't want to, you know, it's a low, low level LED, it's only on from 5:30 to 9:00 or something like that, it's just, it's not all day long.
But we, as I understand it, I remember the one time before the beachware shop there on the corner, we made them take the sign out, and I thought we had a rule that there would not be illuminated signs in the village.
In the windows? In the windows?
Well.
Well, that. So I, no, I did not address.
Ms. Leeve, I thought I asked, is there a rule against illuminated signs in the village?
No, there are certain types of illuminated signs that are allowed, according to the code.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask, if Mr. Fendig would come back up, he'd make signs for a living, to ask you a question, if you all mind? From the expert?
I just want a spot.
In the best of your knowledge, this is lighted by LED, can that LED be toned down? The illumination, is it possible?
Commissioner Willis, I'm not sure how that sign was built exactly. It is possible, it could be possibly reduced a little bit, yes?
Well, Ms. Watson, you know, possibly some way around this is that LEDs be eliminated altogether and just have a, you know, you have not post signs, but a lamp sign that would be shined and on the sign.
Landscape sign, like a roof sign or something.
Yeah, a roof sign or something, but.
It could have, it's possible it could have a different type of lighting, and that's a possibility.
Because I think part of the issue is the illumination of this sign, from what I hear.
And he's probably really just trying to sell tacos, he's probably not really sure about how signs work in the ordinance.
And I want him to sell tacos.
I do, too.
I agree, Mr. Fendig, but it was, you know, and I understand his frustration, it was the county's job to enforce the ordinance, it's not, I, I.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I agree with you, what you're saying.
Again, I wasn't involved in the problem.
No, I know, I'm saying, and I understand his frustration, and I understand it was a previous staff as well.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Mr. Chairman?
None here. Any questions for Mr. Fendig to help out?
Just discussing his motion itself.
Thank you.
It would seem to me to be cleaner if we denied the application and let him reapply with a, a sign that met the ordinances, and start over again and come back with a sign, instead of trying to make.
The way has got to come back.
True, well. So I would draw.
Vote on that motion.
You still vote on this motion, it goes either way. You still vote on this motion, it goes either way.
Either way.
Mr. Chairman, I would prefer to see the motion be withdrawn. I understand why the motion was made like that, but I think it's not appropriate for us to sit up here and try to retrofit a private business's sign by making things up, say, if you do this, if you do that, so forth. I think it would be much cleaner to say, we're going to deny this request, and they need to come back with a sign that fits in better with the historic and aesthetic provisions of the village.
I take a little exception to that because one of our possible motions is to defer with guidance to the applicant, so it's totally appropriate to make that kind of a motion. And I don't, I'm not going to withdraw it, so I appreciate if the commission would vote on it, and then it goes or it doesn't go.
Further discussion?
Commissioners, if I could, just to update, we were reviewing the ordinances. If you deny an application?
Six months.
Six months before they can reapply.
Six months before they come back.
Thank you.
Now, that's a business sign, come on up.
I'm going to close discussion unless there's final comments, please.
I just have one comment, you know? To, to deny it would be like Mr. Worley says, he cannot come back for six months. And when you have a business, you need signage. And if the code enforcement goes through, I would imagine they would probably ask him to take the sign down. So this gives him an opportunity to come into compliance with our direction.
I'd just like to weigh in. I think the six months is a difficult, difficult penalty based on the history the applicant shared with us tonight, and I think we all agree, he wasn't properly guided through the application process, and it sounds like he's willing to fix the problem. And that's what we're here to do, is support him on that. And so I would just leave it at that. Any further questions? Okay. Closed discussion. Call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, which is item two, based on Commissioners Watson's modifications? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four. Four.
All opposed?
One, two, three, four. One, two, what's down there?
Abstentions?
Help, help, help with it again.
Three, nothing.
Okay. So I got four, two, one.
No, I, I voted against you.
Okay.
I voted against you.
Thank you. Four to three.
Right.
The motion carries. Okay. If we could move on to the next item, which is another signage for 545 Ocean Boulevard. Staff, please.
This application is VP 3735. The applicant is DRD SSI LLC, and the property address is 545 Ocean Boulevard. Existing zoning is village mixed use and island preservation overlay, and it will be a commercial use. And this is the property right here. It's actually right next door to the last application. So this is the, the building. So the application is for one new double-sided sign for banker real estate, and this is a freestanding, double-sided, sandblasted, four-by-six cedar sign, and it's mounted on six-foot-high white signposts. There are two, two white signposts that will be mounted on, and as part of our code requirements, they are required to be 10 feet back from the front property line. This is a photo of, of the structure and the freestanding side, E, in the front yard in this location. And this is a site plan showing where they plan to, to put the sign, but as I noted in my comments, it does need to be 10 feet back because it is a freestanding sign. And this is what the sign looks like. And these are your performance standards and design review criteria. And then your possible motions are move to approve, move to defer, or move to deny the application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Meadows?
Stephanie, the application that came to us separately from the packet has a reference that says the sign will be lighted by landscape fixture. There's nothing in the staff report that explains what, what kind of lighting by landscape fixture, and what are the requirements? Can it, can it be lit all night?
If I can clarify, you said something came separately from your staff report regarding this item?
Yes, the application was forwarded to us separately, but we got it, but it was not in the packet.
Oh, okay.
But it talks about lighted by landscape fixture, and there's no explanation of that in the staff report. I'm just curious about what that means.
So the, the lighting will be basically an uplighting fixture, so it will shine upward to light, so there will be no internal lighting to the sign, so it will just shine upward to light the sign at night. Sorry about that.
So is it permissible for that to run all night?
We do not have any time limits for, for that, but I would say if that is a question that the commission would like to, to talk about, that could be a condition that is turned off at a certain time of night.
So I want to be clear, our, our rules and ordinances do not have any requirements or limits on the hours of lighting in the village?
Not that I'm aware of in terms of signage.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments for staff? We'll invite the applicant to come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for taking so much of the commission's time tonight, but I, I am here to represent banker realty. And again, I'm here to ask you for your approval of this sign application. This is a new business location for a growing real estate firm. They're asking for a sign in this location to get their, to get up and running, get in business, so they can serve their customers. And as far as I know, this request does conform to sign standards for the village preservation.
Questions for, excuse me, I have one question here. Mr. Fendig?
Yes, sir.
Are you, is the intention to light that all night?
Well, I was just talking with the bankers, and they think it would be prudent to put a timer on the sign, so it doesn't run all night.
Right. Are you familiar with, what's the practice in the village?
It, it varies. The restaurants, usually if they're open for business, the restaurants have, have their sign lights on.
Sure.
Some, a few entities in the village run their lights all night long. Most do not.
Right. Which reinforces we have no ordinance on that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Mr. Fendig, thank you very much for your information, and I just want to comment that you don't need to apologize for taking our time this evening. We have a lot of questions because the information that we give, are given in our material many times is not adequate for us to get an evaluation of what the requirements are, the limitations, and the proposals. So you're, you don't have to feel bad.
Thank you, sir.
We feel like, we would like to have better information upfront, but here's my question. Would your client be amenable to a limitation of having that sign off, their illumination off 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
I can't answer that. I don't know. It seems like a narrow window to have a light on.
Off?
We're talking about from dark to 21:00.
Off at night. 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.
I, I'd have to ask the bankers. They're here, they're here tonight.
They're the applicant, that's great.
I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Becker.
The question, would, would you be amenable to having your illumination turned off at, at night during dark hours, 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
I would prefer not to have it off at night. There's a lot of traffic in the village in the evening. The ordinance specifically does not permit the time period, and I believe that as a business owner, we have the right to advertise at any time because there's nothing limiting us in the ordinance.
How about after midnight?
After midnight I'd be fine with, but, you know, 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock, a lot of people are still leaving restaurants. We also have events sometimes at night for open houses and things, and I think it would be detrimental to our business if we were not able to leave our sign illuminated.
But you would be okay with midnight?
Yeah, I'd be fine with midnight.
Sounds reasonable. Other questions for the applicant? No, we're good, thank you.[1292.04][1292.04](LAUGHING). We'll open it to, to public comment. Invite any of those that may be in favor of this application to please come forward. Okay, CNN and BNN, we will move to, any opposing views, please, come forward.
I just wonder if it would be possible to stipulate that, well, first of all, this, this sign is going to be perpendicular to the street, is that correct? Okay. So light will go underneath the sign and shine along the, the road, or be visible to oncoming traffic in either direction, there'll be two sets of lights, is that right? Like this? Yes, no?
Light on both sides.
Two sets of lights?
That's correct.
Okay. So if some barrier were to be installed immediately under the sign, to take the space that that light's going to shine through, I think it'd be great. Just shrubbery or some, some opaque barrier that would prevent that light from going out into the road at night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments opposing the application, please? Okay. CNN and BNN, I'll bring it back to the commission for comments. None? So Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve application VP 3735 with stipulation the light goes off at 12:00 midnight.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
I guess not as part of the motion, but just sort of as a consideration that the direction of the lights be pointed to give consideration that light will not flood through to the highway, to the roadway. Just give some consideration to the direction of the, how you point the lights, kind of look at that when you have them done.
Sounds like an aiming issue, but I think it should be noted, we do have a lighting ordinance for blinding conditions. So we do have something that can address that concern. Other questions, comments? Call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
It's unanimous.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Wow.
We're out of the sign business tonight, we're moving on.[1498.12][1498.12](LAUGHING). We have another village application for a porch enclosure. I would ask staff to please give us your report.
This application is VP 3714, and the applicant is Cap Fendig. The property address is 559 Magnolia Avenue. It is a .15 acre parcel that is village residential and island preservation overlay, and the existing land use is low-density residential. And this is the property here at the corner of Magnolia Avenue and Oak Street. And just while we're on this screen, you can, right under the star is actually the, the house, and the rear porch is this back corner right here that's being enclosed. So there's another porch on the property you'll see in photos, but it is actually the rear porch that is being enclosed. They are expanding the roof line over the new porch and just enclosing it. All the materials will match what, what is existing on the house, and they do plan to use this space as additional living space for closets and a dressing room. So in this top photo is, is the rear of the house, and that is the screened porch that will be enclosed to match the clapboard exterior and the yellow and white coloring on the house. That is the front on the bottom left-hand side. That porch is remaining as a screened-in porch. And then it's hard to see in this photo, but this is the side, this is the interior lot line right here, and it's this very back corner, you can't really see very, the best we could do without trespassing on neighbor's property. So this is the, the existing residence. This is Magnolia Avenue here, Oak Street over here, and here is the plan for this back porch enclosure. And this is just a zoomed-in version, so you could see a little more detail. These are the elevations to show what this would look like. This shows the existing house on the site and the setbacks. And this is a design review criteria, so you are looking at these specific design review Your possible motions are move to approve VP 3714, move to defer the application, or move to deny the application, and I can answer questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Okay. We're good. Could we have the applicant to please come forward?
I'm going to go buy a lottery ticket tonight because the odds of having two Fendigs and Bruce all related on different agendas tonight is an unusual thing. My name's Cap Fendig. I'm the owner of 559 Magnolia Avenue. And this house was originally built in the 1929 era. It was basically a summer cottage type of family cottage. It's been in my family since then. In 1956, thereabouts, it was renovated and improved after being on the island for that many years. I got the property in 1997 as a single man and renovated again. I've been married quite a long time, and there's some ladies on this table here and some men. My wife and my granddaughter would like a closet larger than two feet by six feet.[1767.83][1767.83](LAUGHING). And that's the purpose of it. The back porch we don't use, we have a big front porch, and both bedrooms back up to that porch, so it's to provide some ladies more room for shoes, clothes, and other needful things.
Thank you, Mr. Fendig. Questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
All right.
We'll open up... We'll open up public comments. We invite any of those in favor of this application, please come forward. Shy folks, okay. Seen and been known, we invite any of those that may be opposed of this application, please come forward. Okay, we'll close public comments. Open it up for more discussion if necessary. Okay. Close discussion. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application of VP three seven one four, subject to no disturbance of the canopy or the trees adjacent to the home.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor. I'll open that up for discussion. Sorry, it was second.
Second.
It's second.
Mr. Chairman, I would speak to my motion. I drove by the property, and it's a lovely setting, it's a great neighborhood. One thing I noticed, there was no sign indicating to the community that there was going to be work done in this residence, and I understand that might not be required. But I think as a sense of this group here that we would all agree, I hope, that in terms of good government, it would be a courtesy to the public to let the neighbors know that this activity is going to be occurring in their neighborhood. The reason why I mentioned about the trees is because this is on a corner lot. The property owner has done an excellent job of maintaining the canopy oaks that are immediately over the home. And I think it would be appropriate for all efforts to be made to conserve that overhanging canopy that shades the house during their construction project. Thank you.
What exactly was the motion?
Yes, could you please restate the motion?
Approve application VP three seven one four, subject to no disturbance of the canopy.
No disturbance of canopy. Yeah, I'd like to ask the applicant if there'd be any disturbance.
There's a request, sorry, request to ask the applicant? I think the battery's now. Thank you. Mr. Fendig, would you be opposed to the modification to the motion?
I'm sorry, I heard a discussion of trees, but I didn't hear the specific.
There's a motion to approve your application with the request that the canopy would not be disturbed.
That's no problem. I do have some limbs that have withstood two hurricanes, and I'm risking keeping them up, so I don't plan to take any down. A part of the roof application is to shed the high volume of leaves that fall upon that house where they can be raped up instead of me going on the roof to get them. So, you know, pending the safety of the house, I don't have any problem with that. It's not in the plan.
Understood. So the new roof line will not interfere with existing trees? Thank you. All right. Any more discussion? I call for a vote. All those in favor for approving the application with the modification that the canopy will not be disturbed, please raise your hand, say aye. It's unanimous. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, if we can move on to the, we have another village application for a demolition of a existing property. Six hundred Demery Way, staff, please. Is it Demery Road or Demery Way?
It is, it is Demery Way. This is VP three seven two five. The applicant is the Horton Family Limited Partnership. The address is six hundred Demery Way. The area of the property is .14 acres, and it's in village residential as well as island preservation overlay. And the existing land use is low-density residential. And this is the property with the star right here. This is Demery Way, and this is Oak Street right here. Actually, the property we were just looking at is just kind of a block away over this direction. So the applicants are requesting design review for the demolition of an existing nineteen fifty-two stucco and brick house. It is two bedrooms and one bath. The applicant has stated that code deficiencies and structural defects make renovation costs prohibitive, and they also state that no trees will be disturbed. This is the existing house. This is Lot B. There were originally two lots in this subdivision that were re-subdivided in two thousand and four. So there is lots A, B, and C on this property, and this structure does sit on Lot B. So if you were to go to this property, lots A and C are vacant. The applicant does also own these adjacent lots as well. And here are photos that the applicant did submit that show the front elevation, the rear elevation, and then just either side of the structure. Here's some interior photos just to show the condition of the home. And here's some photos also to show just the rotting wood around some of the windows, some of the cracks in the walls, and some of the defects in the home. So these are some different standards for demolitions than what you have seen in the signs that you've been looking at in village preservation. So these are your possible actions you have in this list, and then there were some other standards that were reviewed in your staff report. But just to kind of give an overview, you do have an opportunity to either approve the application as is, you can also suggest or ask for additional information. There's also the option to deny the application, and you can recommend the building official approval of the demolition permit application. And then the final one is you could actually delay for a hundred eighty days a recommendation or a decision. And what this does was if you do choose this, this gives a hundred eighty days for any interested parties who might be interested in preserving the house to try to work with the applicant and the owner to potentially preserve the property. This doesn't, my audio is going in and out. So this is kind of a different option. And these are just the possible motions that you have, just kind of summarized here on this page. And I believe the applicant is here tonight. If you have any more specific questions about what they are looking to do, and I'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Under island preservation, I'm reading that it says on seven oh nine point seven, the applicant shall submit drawings and sketches and specifications of the application as outlined below. I don't have anything as far as what they're planning to build, what's they demo. And this is when they're making an application for proposed construction, alteration, modification, or demolition. Is that right, correct, and it stated?
Sure, that's a good question. They have not indicated what they do plan to do on the property, so this is request to demolish the home. They have not requested approval for any new development on the property. Any new development will come back before the IPC because this is in the island preservation to get approval. So if they do plan to do an additional development on this property, it'll come back before this body.
But it says for the requirement is to submit drawings, so therefore this would be an incomplete application. And then if you look over at seven nine point seven C, it says incomplete applications will not be forwarded to the Island Planning Commission. So it's asking for drawings when an application is submitted.
May I jump in for a second? I think I'm looking at seven oh nine point seven, which is specific to the application for the demolition structure. So I think that's probably a more narrow requirement. It narrows the requirements down of what absolutely has to be in there. And my question is, it absolutely shall include, the application for a demolition permit shall include a structural report when the building condition cited as a reason for the demolition request. Did you ask them to submit this structural that has to be certified by an engineer? Did you ask for that?
I did. So I did talk with the applicant regarding that because that was not submitted. They did, they did submit some photos showing some condition, but there was not a structural report as required here. And what it says is that, so when I talked to the applicant about that, they, and they can address this further as well. They said that the structural condition is not the only reason they are requesting the demolition. It is one of the conditions because the extent of remodel would be, to the extent that they don't feel it would be feasible. So that was their response to that, but I did, I did let them know that is a requirement that may come up.
Because it says when the condition of the building is the reason for the request, which it is, is he says it's too cost prohibitive to fix the building, so it's the condition of the building. Our ordinances require a structural report by a certified engineer before that can be approved. And that was seven oh nine point seven H four.
And I did let the applicant know that although they did say there were other reasons that they are looking for the demolition, that's not the only reason. I did let them know that this may come up from the commission as a request to have that done. And I know they did look into, they did talk to a structural engineer to see if they could possibly get something for today, but it wasn't feasible with a quick turnaround, so. But they are on notice of that.
Okay, another requirement under that same section. H two requires a narrative on the proposed use, and I mean, we don't know, does he intend to leave it vacant? Or does he intend to build? I mean, we're not asking for a site plan, but, you know, the narrative of what is proposed use, whether it's leave it vacant or whatever, we don't have that information. And that's required information under the ordinance for us to approve a demolition permit.
Mr. Chairman. I have slightly different wording in front of me from the staff report regarding evaluation criteria from seven oh nine point seven zoning regulations. G five says, well, it says an application for the demolition of a structure in a district shall include a site plan and elevations of any proposed structures or uses required. The staff comment says the application does not indicate proposed structures or uses. Then why is this on the agenda? Mr. Chairman, I think this is improperly before us, and it does not meet the requirements to be here.
Okay, other comments?
It seems to me that someone who wants to demolish a building doesn't have to bring a site plan or anything of that nature or drawings if they intended to leave it vacant. That wouldn't make much sense to me. We just need to know what the future use that they intend. I think that's all the narrative that's required.
Sorry, other comments?
That's great. I see what you're saying. And even in saying that, I feel like there's some confusion in what they're, what we've been presented.
Well, it's not complete. I mean, the applicant can finish what they needed to do, so.
Okay, could we ask the applicant or representative to come forward, please?
I'm Joan Lewis, and I'm representing the Horton Family. And to answer your question about the owner's use of the property, they just want the home demolished. They just want to sell a vacant lot at some point in time, and then the new buyer would go through the process to have approval for what they want to build on the property. They did look into renovating the building. It was not going to be cost-effective for them to do that. It's a two-bedroom, one-bath. It doesn't bring much value to them as far as a rental property. It's, the lot itself is worth far, far more than the house that's sitting on the lot. The house is like a concrete block construction with stucco and brick. According to a worker that they had work on the house, he said the brick was starting to crumble. There's cracks, the floors are uneven, so there's a lot of patent defects which are just visible to anybody that would walk through the house to see the problems. I had a builder also go to the property, and he just said to bring everything up to code would be almost cost prohibitive. And something that, you know, being built in nineteen fifty-two, just hard to work with what's there because of the materials that are there. The windows are all rusting out, they're metal. You know, it's just, it would be very hard to renovate a structure like that. So, you know, they just felt like the best thing to do would be to have the house demolished, so something that would improve the neighborhood to be built there. But they're not going to, they're not interested in doing that. They would like to just put the property on the market and let somebody else do that at some time.
Okay, so it clarifies what's the future use for this. Sounds like you want to make it vacant and then sell it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No engineer's report on its structural integrity?
No, I submitted this, my application in February, mid-February. And then I was contacted last week to say that I might need a structural engineer's report. I called everybody that's in that business around here. There are very few of them. And no one could get anything done for me within the timeframe that we had. They, you know, they're just, they're all small right now. But I, you know, that being just, you know, one of the, I mean, I think there's enough evidence with just seeing the house itself without a structural engineer's report that it's just not worth working with what's there. It would be very hard to add onto it.
Understood. Thank you. I think it's obvious. There's no report. The applicant wasn't successful in finding anyone at this time. So, thank you, Ms. Lewis. Okay, we can open this up for a public comment. Are there any of those that may be in favor of this application? Please come forward. Okay, seen and been known. Are there any of those that might be opposed? Please come forward. Okay, seen and been known. We'll close public comment, come back to the commission for any more discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would think that the neighbors down there were probably happy with that house that's torn down. But follows me that in any other neighborhood on this island, you can get a demolition permit to tear down a house. By the preservation, you have to come before this to get this body's approval. Obviously, this house has no historical significance at all, terrible condition. I don't know why anybody would not want to have this house demolished. And so for that reason, I plan to vote for this application.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Mr. Meadows. Yep, thank you. Ms. Kate?
Joel, point well taken. However, part of our job is to look at a completed application, and there are things that were supposed to be presented to us, and they have not been presented to us. So it's more about us having adequate information to make an educated decision on an application.
It doesn't take a structural engineer to determine that house needs to come down.
There are rules that we are supposed to follow being on this commission.
Common sense too, Ms. Kate, common sense.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Meadows?
I have a question for Mr. Worley. Mr. Worley, on page one of the staff report, the bottom half of the page elicits the five items that are required in an application for a demolition permit. Would you agree that those items are required? For an application to be complete? For an application to be complete?
Commissioners, I think whether an application is complete is up to your judgment. If you feel like you're satisfied with the criteria have been met, then that's your decision to make. It's not for me to dictate to you to make that decision. Now, that ordinance does outline specific things that need to be submitted. Now, you know, I think sometimes maybe staff makes a judgment as to whether enough information has been submitted to address that issue. But, again, they make the preliminary review, and then it's up to this body to determine whether they feel like those criteria have adequately been met.
Well, if I may continue, the staff has indicated that they would agree that those required items are not included. And so, again, I asked Mr. Chairman, I know you don't like to prolong these discussions. Why is this before this body? I believe that it should be withdrawn. It shouldn't be here. We spent a half an hour on an application that we shouldn't have to spend time discussing at all, period. Because if this information is correct, we do not have a complete application with the required items for consideration. So, I'm happy to have this conversation cease now. Or if anybody else has, wants to continue this conversation, we can. Thank you.
Further discussion, please?
Okay, this is for Mr. Worley. The code section that I read, 709.7, it says, "The demolition application shall include." So, if it does not include the structural report from a certified structural engineer, as a body, we have the authority to say that doesn't matter? And we can go forward and vote?
Ma'am, I guess what I'm saying is, as staff told you earlier, in their judgment, because the applicant was not citing solely the structural part of the building as the sole reason to demolish, I think she said tonight that they want to demolish it so they can sell the property. So, I think staff made the determination that because that was not the sole reason, that they could forward it to y'all for your consideration. Now, if you as a body determine that you do not, you're not satisfied with that, and you want a structural report, then you can defer it and tell them they need to bring you a structural report, or you can deny it.
Okay, so what we've heard is this is not, it's not the only reason. And therefore, if it was the only reason, a structural report would be mandatory. But since it's not the only reason, it doesn't have to be.
And this body, y'all as a body can determine that if, if you want to say that you don't, if at any time, structural, the structural integrity of that is a reason, and you want to say that we're not going to consider those, then you can do that.
Okay, well, then I have a comment. And I think it's quite obvious from the photos that we've received. If you've had an opportunity, commissioners, to go by and view the property, you'll see that it's very low-lying, subject to flooding in that area tremendously. And since we have heard other reasons and not just the condition, then I probably would not stick to the fact that a structural report is missing is imperative. Also, we've heard what the proposed use is, and that was another criteria. So, I would probably be in favor of this then on that basis.
Any more comments?
Yes.
Ms. Rooks?
Okay, I've heard what you said, but I think we have to be mindful when different projects come before us. And when we start making changes or letting, not abiding by certain rules where we are not in compliance, then when someone else come up, come before us with similar situations, then we want to do them differently. I think we need to be consistent in whatever we're doing. So.
Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, I will also add, we had not shown it because we did have some still photos of the property, but we do have some drone footage on this property. It does show really the land more than the house. But if that would be helpful to the commission, we can show that, if that would show a little bit more.
My personal feeling on that, drone footage may not add additional value to what we've already seen. We saw a good, kind of a site plan, if you will, showed the house footprint relative to the lot and the adjacent lots. So, unless the commission would like to see the drone video, then I would defer that. I guess my comment is, this family wants to knock down their house that's no longer usable. We're not talking about the Oglethorpe Hotel here. We're talking about a block house built in the 50s. We're going to suggest to deny their right to tear down their own house because of lack of a structural report, which is really not needed. There's no houses next, near this house that would be in danger of that demolition. So, it strikes me as we're trying to apply a rule just to stop the process. And I find that, I find that a little difficult to understand. This commission acts with discretion from time to time. We try to maintain a balance, we try to maintain consistency for sure, and I appreciate Ms. Rooks' comments on that point. If we were talking about something very historical, I think I would be a bit more sympathetic. But a single-story block house, seriously? I mean, we just have to think about this. Sorry, Ms. Rooks?
I agree with you. I, you know, I have no problem in the demolition. But I'm also concerned about compliance, you know, us being, at some point or another, we've got, for years and years, I've seen development and things come about, come about. Oh, we put a rubber stamp on it, we pass it, we pass it, we pass it. Then when it get to a point where it's overloaded, then everyone start saying, "Whoa, that's enough. We need to, you know, put a halt to this." So, at some point or another, we need to go ahead and abide by the rules, you know, be in compliance. I'm not against them demolishing their home, not at all.
Okay. I'm going to close discussion. I think we've heard all the points, the relevant points, and we're getting a bit repetitious. I'll entertain a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that VP 3725, 600 demoli- demolition be deferred until a structural engineer report is brought before this body, so we would be in compliance.
Okay, a second?
A second.
Okay, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
Yes.
More discussion? Okay, Mr. Meadows?
I believe that I heard in the motion stipulation that a structural, what a engineering report be required. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to say that all required information needs to be submitted.
Okay, let's be specific.
A site plan and elevations of any proposed structures or uses is a requirement.
If applicable. There's nothing proposed to be built. Okay, so we have a recommended amendment to the motion. Is there a second?
I seconded it, I did.
Okay, so we'll call a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, the motion, the amendment fails, thank you. Back to the original motion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor to defer, which is example three up there with the modification, to include a structural report? It would, sorry, are we deferring to the next meeting? Do we need to define that? So, that would be June? Okay. Hope that was clear. All those in favor, please raise your hand? All those opposed? Okay, so the motion fails.
To approve application VP 3725 as submitted.
A second?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded, discussion, please?
I just have a quick question of Will, Mr. Worley. Is it appropriate for us as IPC to approve an application that we deem incomplete?
Well, again, ma'am, it's up to you to determine whether you feel is complete. It seems like some of y'all feel like it is complete enough, and some of you don't. So, if you feel that it is not complete and that you should not vote for it, then that's your prerogative. It's not up to me to tell each one of y'all how to vote on the motion.
Ms. Rooks?
Yeah, as to the, we heard from the applicant that one of the reasons they want to demolish the house is for economic gain. And that's different from the requirement here. It says, "When a structural report is required is when the condition of the building is really the sole reason." And since that's not the sole reason, there is an economic reason, then the structural report would not be mandatory, as I see it. So, I would be in favor of the motion.
Okay, any other comments? Call for a vote on the motion, which was to approve the application as submitted. All those in favor, please raise your hand? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries four to three. Thank you.
Was that to approve?
To approve, yes. I was going to suggest we could go one more application and take a break, or we can take a break now?
Take a break now since he left.
Okay. Sorry, if we could adjourn for maybe five minutes? Thank you. Could we please come to order? Excuse me, in the rear there, can we please come to your seats, join us? Okay. All right. Meeting's back in session. We have one more village item. Jerry's Dug House. Was that dug or dog?
Dog, dog, dog.
That's not how I'm used to spelling dog. Okay, Jerry's Dog House, sorry, don't be offended. If everyone's back, staff, could you please give us your report?
Okay, so this is a conditional use permit. It is CUP 3733. The applicant is Gerald Nardell. And the name of the project is Jerry's Dug House, and it is a dug instead of dog. Market. The area of property is .19 acres. The existing zoning is village mixed use and island preservation. The existing land use is commercial. There are a number of kiosks on this one property. And the proposed land use is a restaurant, but as is defined in the VMU ordinance, concessions are also defined as restaurants, so we can go into that a little bit more. Then comprehensive plan, future land use is island village center. And this is the property here. This is Pier Village Market. This is Mallory Street here and Beach View Drive. And the property, the kiosk, the specific kiosk that this refers to is right here under the star. So here's just an aerial to show that there are a number of kiosks, and it's this one adjacent to the roadway here. So he is looking to operate a concession business at Pier Village Market. Restaurants are conditional uses, and what he is looking to sell, it's not a sit-down restaurant. It's a very small space. It's only eight by 12. And it's an existing building. But he does plan to sell hot dogs, soups, chips, bottled and canned drinks, and other items that are typically what you would consider to be concession items if you were going to go to any concession stand. And we do, as I mentioned, we do less concessions under restaurant use, and that's specifically in the VMU ordinance. This is what the building looks like now. There is a staircase that comes from the kind of shared aisle way up to this kiosk. And just a little bit more on this. When the applicant initially came to us, he was interested in opening this up, and staff informed him that he does need to get a conditional use permit to operate this type of business in the VMU district. What is allowed in the VMU district is a grocery store. And so since many of his items that he's selling, not including hot dogs and soups and any prepared items like that, but the canned drinks, candy chips, those are grocery store items. So he actually does have a business license at this time to operate a grocery store out of this location. But he is not selling any hot dogs or any of the food items that are, that have to be prepared or warmed or heated on-site until he does through this process and get a conditional use permit. So here are the standards of evaluation that the commission does look at for a conditional use permit. And these are also in your staff report. He is looking to primarily be open for lunchtime, but also for dinner and the later evenings. So Monday through Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00. Also Friday nights, he would like to be open late to have kind of that later night crowd that's down in the pier from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And then he has requested to be open occasionally on Saturday, or I'm sorry, Sundays. He would like to be open during peak visitor weekends, so primarily when there's special events going on in town, spring breaks, and holiday breaks. He didn't specify specific days, but he wanted to leave that flexibility that when there are busy times, he can take advantage of those busy weekends and open up on Sundays. And these are your possible motions. Move to recommend approval of this, of CUP 3733. And this is a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, who would be the final decision maker. And then your second option is to recommend approval with conditions, move to defer, or move to recommend denial of this application. And I know the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions, and I can answer them as well.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Okay. Could we have the applicant come forward, please, and introductions?
Good.
Everybody hear me?
Yeah, if you do that, you just tilt.
I'm Gerald Nardell. I've been in the restaurant business in St. Simons for-
Tilt your microphone up so you can, there you go.
I've been in the restaurant business in St. Simons for probably 30 years. Managing, waiting on tables, bartending. It was the time of my life to open my own business. I was looking for a specific place to do it. I've been on the island since 1980. I've been geared toward the village area, but it's so popular and it's so, there's, you can't really find anything open, and when you do, you have to just jump on it. And I went ahead and took the risk of going ahead and tried to do this, to try to get approved by y'all. Went into an existing building. All I've done is do improvements to the building. I'm not going to cause any more traffic problems, any kind of litter, anything like that. I've got my own trashcans out there. I've noticed some other businesses in the area that don't have trashcans, but I do. I've noticed that some of their items are in my trashcan, so if anybody complains about litter, you know, I'm trying to do something about it. I'm also not doing styrofoam. I'm doing everything biodegradable, bottled water, canned drinks. I've gotten with the Visitors Bureau. I've got with the bus tours. I've got with local hotels in the area to let them know what's going on for late-night food for their guests. I've actually talked to a lot of tourists that have come to the island that says there's a particular bus tour that comes to the island. They drop them off at noon. They have to be back on the bus at 2:00. They've had numerous complaints to me when I'm sitting out there just trying to get questions from people that say they're stuck in restaurants in the village because they're dropped off in peak lunch hours. There's really nowhere to go get something and to be able to go do the rest of your time shopping. So I'm trying to offer food at a decent price. I'm not going to charge $10 for a sandwich or $8 for a cup of ice cream. My hot dogs are $3 and $4, and they're Nathan's hot dogs. Trust me, they're good. I know everybody in the area. I grew up here. I've had nothing but support from everybody, and I'm just asking for approval to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Thank you, Jerry. Okay, so this is actual public hearing. So there would have been signs, notices placed. We'll invite anyone that's in favor of the application. Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, being none. Any opposed views, please come forward. Okay. That break worked. All right, so we'll close the public comments. Questions or comments by the commission?
I have a question.
Question for staff. There's another food service business in this little collection of kiosks. That's the Italian Ice Place. Are they also operating under conditional use?
I would need to check into that to see. I'm not sure how long they've been in operation, so I'd have to check that to see if they do have a conditional use for that business.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Could the staff clarify this part about the joint water and sewer pretreatment requirement?
Yes, so there was a question still from Joint Water and Sewer regarding some pre-treatment requirements the business needed to do. And as of last week, the applicant had satisfied everything to their satisfaction. They had done their inspections, and so there was a revised review history that was sent out to the commission that shows that they are in approval of what is going on here. So he meets those requirements.
Thank you, Stephanie. Other comments? Okay. Not going to talk past the sale. Entertain a motion? Somebody?
I move to recommend approval of application CUP 3733 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a second for Mrs. Brooks. Discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor for the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right. So that brings us to site plan application for the Forbes Farm. If we can hear the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. This is the site plan for Forbes Farm SP 3695, located at 2610 Lawrence Road on St. Simons. The property in its totality is 36.31 acres, and approximately eight acres of that is the development area, which is zone forest agricultural. And the remainder of the property is under the conservation, preservation zoning. The existing land use is undeveloped, and the proposed land use is for special event facility of just over 8,000 square feet. This is the location of the property, shown here where the gold star is. These are site photos. This is the current entrance into the property. And this is further into the property. I know many of you did visit the property previously on a site visit. Again, the development will consist of an event facility of approximately 8,000 square feet and the associated infrastructure, and it's zone FA and conservation, preservation. The proposed use does require a special use permit. And the special use permit for the event facility was granted with conditions by the Board of Commissioners on April 5th of 2018. And the following conditions are requirement of that special use permit. No fireworks, no parking overnight unless necessitated for public safety. Prior to site plan approval, the applicant and staff will work with the Glen County Police Department to develop a traffic control plan and guidelines for traffic control at future events at the facility, and the hours of operation shall cease by 11:00 PM. Earlier, you received an update that the applicant had worked out the arrangements with the Glen County Police, and this evening I provided a copy of that agreement for your benefit that states that for events of guest, excuse me, where the guest count would exceed 150, that an off-duty police officer would be hired to help manage the traffic. There may be exceptions made when alternative transportation, such as trolleys, are provided for the guests. This is the site plan that is before you this evening. And I'm going to walk through the site plan and obviously happy to answer any additional questions at the conclusion of the presentation. The entrance is located here off of Lawrence Road, and they are proposing a split entrance with an entryway and an exit met by a roundabout with sand set brick. This would then be a paved drive, and this basically is a divided median, if you will. So each lane of traffic, there'd be one lane of traffic here coming into the property and the other lane going out onto the property. They then have a second roundabout, so this area in the front is the area that is primarily cleared today, was the former paddocks and polo fields, my understanding. And then as you move into the property, they are proposing to have the formal parking area there. They are requesting the use of grass or other impervious surface rather than paved for the parking. And this is actually something that was discussed at the previous planning commission meeting when the special use permit was before you. So they will have the guest parking located there. The event facility itself is located on the far eastern edge of the property. They also have a drop-off roundabout located in front of the building. You can see here where the proposed building is located. It does have a catering kitchen that is off here to the side, and as well as the ADA accessible parking located adjacent to the event facility. They are proposing mulch pedestrian pathways from the parking areas up to the facility. The dumpster is located here to the side. They also have received a water and sewer variance, as sewer capacity is not currently available for the property. They are showing the septic tanks to be located in approximate this location. This will require, the septic system will require health department review and approval. And so the tanks are located about here, but if you will follow the plan, you will see that they are proposing to have the actual septic drain field located further away in the open grassed area closer to the western side of the property and further away from the marsh. They have met all of the requirements as far as the amount of parking that's required. They are required to have 115 spaces, and that is, that's the amount of space they have provided, 115 spaces. They are proposing stormwater management. You can see their proposed stormwater system that, of course, will have to be reviewed. You can see their proposed stormwater system that, of course, will have to be reviewed in more detail based on their drainage plan and hydrology report that will be submitted with their construction plans. They have well exceeded the tree credits that are required on the property, it only requires 64.16 credits. They have provided the type E buffer here along Lawrence Road. They are proposing that that primarily be made up of existing vegetation, of course would be supplemented if the existing vegetation does not meet the requirements. The lighting plan is required to be in compliance with all Glen County ordinances for the venue is located next to the marsh, and they propose to keep the parking areas grassed. I spoke to the water and sewer a moment ago, and I'm happy to answer questions you may have about the actual site plan itself.
Thank you, Ms. Korbowski. That was pretty thorough. I'm sure there's some questions.
Oh, I apologize, Chairman. I did, let me go back to the presentation just so I can show you the elevations which are also required. I'm happy to go back to the site plan. This is the elevation of the front of the proposed event facility. This is the floor plan layout, and here your possible motions. We do have the drone footage that you saw previously, if you would like to see that again as well.
Any requests to see the drone video? I don't think it changed from the special use application. Okay, any questions for staff? Mr. Meadows.
A question for Mr. Worley, and I don't know if you were present when the Board of Commissioners discussed this item, but it's my understanding that the engineering firm had committed to moving the entire project back farther from the edge of the CMP line, and they agreed to do that. It was reported in the local media, and I did not see anything on the screen or hear anything in report about a change in the drawing that we have. Can you tell us, is this project going to be moved back?
Mr. Meadows, is this working? I think planning staff is probably better to answer that question myself. I think they were there and handling that application, so I might defer that to planning staff.
Mr.?
Yeah, I was going to say, my recollection was there was a commitment to move the septic tank to double the distance from the CMP line, not the entire project.
Thank you. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Other questions for staff?
And again, it's related to the CMP line. Did you discuss with the applicant what protection measures needed to occur during the course of construction to prevent erosion into the marsh?
When they submit for their construction plans and their building permit, they will also be required to submit a full erosion and sedimentation control plan.
I ask that question because I don't know exact scale here, but it looks to me like portion of the building is within about maybe three feet to the CMP line, and I know that when this body approved the construction work for the sea island cottages recently, the only comment that was made was they're going to move the T-box. When I was invited over to the property during construction, in fact, what had happened was they bulldozed the entire property from the lodge down to the marsh line, and that was the construction plan. And so I'm just wondering, do we have all the information that we need here, or are we out of line to ask those questions?
We do have all the information that is required for the site plan and the further detailed information about any grading, drainage changes, et cetera, that will be submitted with the construction plans.
And I note on the drawing that the majority of this property is in the formal designated flood zone. Does that have any bearing on considerations for site construction or development?
They will be required to meet our flood ordinance and build a foot above flood elevation for the actual structure. So again, that information will be submitted with the building plans and reviewed for compliance with all codes.
So they are allowed to have the septic holding tank and the treatment tank within the flood zone, is that correct?
That will be reviewed by the Health Department to ensure that it's compliant with their requirements.
Any other comments, questions? We invite the applicant, please come forward. Okay. Do you want to give an overview?
As you know, we did receive our special use permit, so we are permitted to have events and move forward with the facility. In planning Forbes Farm, I just want to point out that it's our mission to keep this space as green as possible. It's very thoughtfully designed, and we went to every expense to hire the best engineers, the best landscape designers, the best builder, the best architect. It's just very well thought out, and, I'm sorry, put my glasses on, one second. I think as you ride by the property, you can't really see the beauty if you're riding down Lawrence Road at 45 miles an hour. It kind of looks like a mess, actually, especially after all of the hurricanes and storms. I think it's going to be a great improvement when we go in and we clean it up, and, you know, it's going to just look a lot better. I think, Ms. Brooks, you stated as you walked out to the back of the property, just how, it's just really beautiful, and you just cannot see that from Lawrence Road. You have to get out in the midst of the property to really be able to appreciate it. And I think that with our plan, it'll give people the opportunity to celebrate among the oaks and to really get to admire the surroundings. Sorry, I'm getting over a little cold. So I want to point out also that this land is FA, so it could be clear cut under its current zoning, and what we propose to do is to keep the oak trees. As you said, we're keeping more credits than we have to, and, you know, we're really proud of our plan, and just, we're going to follow all the ordinances and do everything we can to just make a really beautiful site that the island can be proud of.
Okay.
Just to let you know, too, we've already turned down about 10 weddings, one being our daughter. She gets her master's in social work, she graduates on May 4th, she gets married November 10th. We might have to pop up some tents, but it's her dream to have a wedding here. If it's not here, you know, maybe she'll get to have an anniversary party there one day.
Okay. Jonathan, do you want to offer any comments?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Roberts. I think Denise did a good job explaining the site plan, and I'm glad to react to any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Mr. The engineer, please.
Robert.
So, I'm a layman, so you can help me figure out what my question is. It's our understanding that the proposal for this project is to operate on septic fields rather than tie into the sewer system, and that the basis for that is that septic, approval for septic fields was granted five years ago for a limited number of residential units. Tell us how that translates from a few residential units to a large commercial facility in terms of load on the system.
Right, so the primary connection would always be to the public utility, and in this case, the public utility has said that it's not available. Joint Water and Sewer Commission has been very clear that we can't tie into their sewer system that is on Lawrence Road because they don't have capacity. They've made that clear. So the other option is onsite treatment. A septic system is the preferred onsite treatment method. Glen County requires any person or property seeking use of a septic tank to get a variance from the county commission to allow use for that septic system. That was done for this property. It was determined by the county commission that that stays with the property, and they determined that that was valid.
Perhaps I didn't ask the question I was trying to. It's my understanding that the exception that the county granted was for a small number of residential homes, not a large commercial facility.
I didn't work on the variance application years ago when that happened, and the details of that I can't speak to, but I can speak to the county commission meeting where they determined that that was valid. They asked for a ruling from the county attorney's office whether that would apply to this project, and the county attorney said yes. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, I think what he is trying to say is, is a septic system for a single-family residence, can it be extrapolated to do a large event facility? Yeah, maybe that's not in your favor.
Okay, so I think there's two separate things here. There's a variance to be able to have a septic system.
We're passing.
And then there's the technical system to serve the building or the use. Certainly that's going to be detailed based on this exact use, and that will be permitted through the Health Department. And so, no, you wouldn't have the same system for a single-family residence as you would for an event space, but those technical details will be very specifically designed and run through the Health Department.
But can a septic system be designed for a facility this big?
Yes, it can.
I'd like to point out one thing, that during the storms that we had, there was a higher failure rate with the sewer system than there was with septic systems.
Other questions for the applicant? None? Okay, thank you. We'll go to the public comments section. We invite those in favor of this site plan application, please come forward. Looks like we have one.
How y'all doing tonight? Dave Snyder. I think this is a great compromise in the use of the space for the tourism industry and hospitality industry. This is much needed and will get used. Michelle's a woman of integrity and honesty, you should know that she'll run it right. I think she knows that in order to be competitive with three very, very similar event sites on the marsh, all within about three miles of this space, she's going to have to keep it beautiful, she's got to keep it green and do a good job. Thanks.
Thank you. Others in favor?
My name is Captain Fendig, and I'm here because I own Lighthouse Trolley, and I am the largest provider of transportation on St. Simons, Brunswick, and Jekyll for wedding events for health. And I'm speaking here in favor of this for several reasons. Number one is that this is the only site that has finally appeared on this island that is laid out in an orderly manner to hold events, large events, wedding events, the lullabies specifically. But I want to talk to you a couple of issues that I know that are part of the larger discussion, and that's septic. Of course, you know that the state and county have those regulations. You can't build septic fields unless they lay it out before you get that approval. But I want to talk to you about the properties that we serve with our trolley, the larger events. Dave just talking about, talking about Village Creek. That's right out on the marsh, with water in marsh on both sides. Very large events for health there, and there's not enough parking, and we've trolley a lot of people into those events there, Village Creek. Let's talk about Rainbow Island, you've been to Rainbow Island and Sea Island, you know where I'm talking about there. That event's surrounded by marsh and 25 yards away from the water. Talk about Musgrove Plantation. Musgrove Plantation holds large events and weddings now, and they're held right down there on the water, 25, 30 yards from the water. I'm just talking about septic issues. Captain's Block, you may not know that name, that's over on Stevens Road that's down behind Fort Frederick, holds a lot of events there. And all these events can have at any time 150 to 300 people. That's about the size of weddings are, some more, and of course, some less. And then let's talk about a major counter facility that works at Gascon Park, where you have bathrooms there, it's rented out for wedding events, and it's right there by the water, has septic issues there. So the application is not unique and singular to that point. But all of these places that I've just listed have a terrible parking problem, and even for us to get in with our trolleys, we're crawling around trees, bumpy roads, cars parked everywhere. I mean, not everybody rides the trolley. I wish they would, not just financially, because when you go to drink at an event, I don't like to see anybody get back out on the road, Fred Ripley Road, and come up and down that road after drinking and do driving. So we offer the trolleys as a safe way. Parking, well, your last approval of a wedding event place was the Green House, built by the foundation, table house interior. There's 80 designated parking places in there, but those are shared with all the rest of the businesses in there. We come in there with a trolley, and it's almost impossible to get in and out. But that site's in there and has an orderly parking plan to serve the event in itself. Biggest thing is the county, when I was commissioned, and our group was getting the AW Jones Center up and operating, also converting the casino building into a rental property so it could be self-sustaining. And although these are not septic issues, they definitely are parking issues, because on the lawn of the lighthouse, there can be a 300-person wedding going on, and right next door on the lawn at the county casino and up in the atrium, there can be as many 300 people down there. Parking, you know, is not a problem in the village area. It's a mess all over and everywhere. And of course, have been individual properties. Gold Zenit, Villa Deslantis, Coast Guard Park, yeah, people still get married on the beach at Gold Zenit, by the way, 100, 200-person weddings will set up and get married. So this has always been a thorn in the side of St. Simons, which is a part of the growth that goes on with St. Simons, which is a part of why you are here, and I thank you because I was part of the commission that birthed this process. There's a family that's been here since 1800s. I have an in-ground legacy poured into me to protect St. Simons and be a part of St. Simons, but I've never said below the bridge.
Mr. Fendig.
Point is, is that this event is the only property laid out to really handle an event space.
Thank you. Thank you. Others want to come forward in favor?
Brian Justice, I agree with Fendig and Dave Snyder. We definitely need the venue space. I'd be taking people out of town to do weddings because we don't have places here.
Other comments in favor? Okay, seeing none, being none, we'll move on to those that might oppose it.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me? I have a voice issue. My name is Parker Bruce, and my husband and I, all of our children, grandchildren, nephews, forebears, cousins. daughters, cousins, all home of property north and south of this event venue. This is family property called Oakwood Plantation. It was one of the original 17 plantations on the island. So I appreciate the chance to talk to you, Tom, about my concerns. Should a large event venue be permitted to occupy the space as outlined in their conceptual drawings? I believe numerous undesirable features arise. First, the ingress and egress from the property is governed by a one-way road in each direction. Adding additional traffic and drivers who are coming to and leaving events will only congest my property. Understand, this isn't a one-time-a-day hunt. People have to get there and then they have to leave. So if you have an event, it's going to be twice a day that you're going to have 100, 200 cars passing my property, up and down my road. I'm trying to imagine, trying to get off of my property, turn left and go south. With 100 cars going up and down the road, as they've done a traffic study, I see no supportive elements. Second, nearby residents will be forced to enjoy loud music and parties into the night and noise carries across the marsh. The applicant suggests that this will most likely be on weekends and boy, that's no comfort to me. Who are you on my weekends? And also, they're not going to limit this to weekends. If they have a chance to rent it during the week, they will be renting it during the week. We have established right to peace and quiet enjoyment of our property and any disruption of this on our property may well be considered a nuisance under Georgia law and a code violation. The idea of using septic tanks for under 22 or up to 250 people a day is reckless and counterproductive. What possible effect would that system have on the water table for surrounding residents? My husband and I have cousins or grandparents. I don't want to take the chance of contamination very well. I want to see a better system in place for having sewer problems for 250 people. However, the quiet, serene natural landscape is one of the main factors driving the economic value of property on this end of the island. The indigenous oak trees and other forest products combined with exquisite arch is what makes St. Silens special that must be protected. In order to build the 8,000-foot-square building plus the casino, install two asphalt roads, brick ground belts, fences, sidewalks, horse paddies with the horses for all of my property, it would necessitate a pair of kind of hundreds of old oak trees. We and all of our neighbors up in Delantre are pulling cafes on property for agriculture and looking for you tonight for protection of our rights and you are well positioned to grant this protection. As I trust you have done due diligence on the subject and your decision to deny the fact as presented is 100% supported by the law and your common sense. Thank you.
Other views opposed, please?
Chief Borger, an Island resident, I've got to ask you folks a question. Is this one a done deal too? The company is getting this to the board commissioners for the use permit with a comment. Very disappointed with the forms of his body and he goes to the process. But I leave that with you, that I was very disappointed in the way that came down. Regardless of what the result was, the handling of it was very poor. As a resident, it exceeded my expectations. But let's get on to this now to the rule of the requirement of special use permit. The presentation by the applicant is in conflict with itself. They talked about green, beauty, traffic control, et cetera. If you take a look at the plot plan, the center traffic circle is right on the edge, inside the edge of the start of the tree, you folks have walked the property, okay? That traffic circle is right where the tree line starts. If you move that traffic circle, given the fact you're probably going to build it anyway, if you move the traffic circle, one circle diameter to the west as shown on the depicted on this plane, you'd save a significant amount of trees. The parking lots is depicted. If you put islands, peninsula, whatever you want to call it, and work the parking around the trees, you save a significant amount of it. But even at the parking area, you're not into the maritime forest, the beauty that we're trying to preserve here on the island that previous speakers spoke about. If you took some time and moved the facility on a clean sheet of paper, no cost except for architectural fees, move that facility either left or right, you would also save some additional trees. And folks, when you get out to the marsh's edge, you're in the maritime forest, not just over trees and scrubbed up. Now, ask the eastern side traffic circle, if it could be reconfigured, it'd be saving some additional trees. And again, eastern traffic circles and pavilion are in the maritime forest, the very commodities we're trying to preserve. So the saving is going to be green, we're going to preserve the beauty, is not reflected in what's given in the plan. As a minimum, I would request that we optimize, granted the tree credits are met. If you've heard me speak before, on the minimum requirement mentality is really setting this island back tremendously. So this minimum requirement, I'm not going to debate that they've met the tree requirements and the tree credits, can uphold by a great, great deal. If you just applied a little bit of common sense and expanded the footprint of the parking area, given it's an impervious area, and worked to save the trees, move it left or right, and even did some splitting of the two-lane roadways, there are a number of those on St. Silens, I've got one of the two houses up from me on Palm Drive. It's not uncommon to go ahead and split the roadways to preserve some trees. Are there the 40-inch trees provided by the tree ordinance? Probably not. However, every oak tree you leave here is our great-grandchildren's generation before they're going to see a tree canopy from that tree, particularly when this one already exists. So I'm not sure that what's presented by the applicant is truthful and honest. It is a sales pitch, I ran that and they're in the business, commercial business, okay? But guys, we need to be doing something proactive to get out of the minimum requirement mentality that's screwing our island, particularly the tree canopy canopy. With regard to sewage, sewage is in the septic system, most folks are aware that septic systems are time-dependent. You can engineer, I'm familiar with engineering septic systems for fairly large capacity usage, large construction sites, et cetera, as with including restaurant facilities. So yes, it can be done, but most septic owners don't maintain it, okay? It's a time-dependent item, so they work great for five, 10 years, maybe longer, okay? But if they're not maintaining and operating correctly, and I'll guarantee you, folks in the restaurant business usually don't maintain it more so than the folks that have a residential septic system. That's just a fact of life. So over time, it's going to be a problem. And the first time you have medication, you either have a spill around the septic tank or you start contaminating adjacent wells, okay? So it's time-dependent. You can provide sewage treatment facility where the sewage is treated on-site and it gets a clean, effluent discharge, which is far more superior treating process. Not the cheapest, but some are superior. You will have problems with the septic system if you go forward. So I ask, are you listening? Is this a done deal and do you really care and does the applicant really care about the island and the island beauty because the layout that's here, I've given you three suggestions and I'm sure with a little bit more forethought, you can do some more to save the tree canopy that we have here. And it's maritime forest, we're not just saving a few trees on somebody's lot. This is second growth maritime forest that we're losing, then you can relocate them on a clean sheet of paper, no cost and minimize that growth. You're going to comply with the state's goals that the applicant has for. So I ask that you ask for those provisions to be added to the use to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Other? Okay, let's just do a time check here.
I'm Julian Smith.
Just a second, Mr. Smith, let me just check the time, okay? All right, you're good.
I'm Julian Smith. I'm glad we're finally getting a chance to comment on this site plan, which was originally scheduled for the February meeting. It was posted, it was signed up, et cetera. And at the February meeting, when I tried to comment on the site plan, as it was relevant to the special use permit, I was removed from the Roman handcuffs. Hold on. The, you members of the IPC, not all of you, but the majority of you, have twice declined to recommend approval of this to the Board of Commissioners. You have the power to stop this tonight. The Board of Commissioners, the county commission voted five to one to approve this despite your disapproval. The, I have walked this site from one end to the other, along the north and south boundaries, along the edge of the marsh, back and forth across the maritime forest. I have flown over it twice to different occasions. If you have not walked on this site and looked at it carefully, you really shouldn't be voting to approve this. You should defer it, if you don't deny it, and go and take a look. The IPC was never informed during the special use permit process. It was never informed that the applicants would be applying to have a septic system, a septic tank and a leaf field and the leaf field hundreds of yards away from the septic tank. This should be on the public sewer system. Please don't do this. The number of parking spaces has fluctuated in documents before you, from 205 spaces to 212 and now down to 118, but 118 is only the spaces that are dedicated for parking. Instead, we're going to have a horse paddock. Speaking of the horse paddock, will there actually be any horses on this property at any time? Will there be a stable for the horse, et cetera? And fine, maybe the horses be brought in from time to time to be picturesque. I just love parking in horse manure, so that's, has a nice smell. Why pre-traffic circles? Why any? And I thank Mr. Borger for talking about how the roads and the traffic circles are not properly laid out to avoid having to remove mature live oats. That road layout should not be approved tonight. You should ask them for a better layout that will save more trees. I oppose discharging stormwater into the marsh. This is the only area where any stormwater is going to be retained according to the site plan. The, under open space provided, the staff report reports that the venue is located adjacent to the marsh. They're not providing the marsh. The marsh is not part of the land that is relevant to this site plan and they're not providing the marsh. The good Lord or Mother Nature provided that marsh, that open space. The, the application should have specified open space other than a horse paddock on the site plan. The, let's get down to the real nitty-gritty. Dr. Eller, who owns this property, has property rights and we don't wish to infringe on his property rights. He has a right to sell his property to anyone, but the applicant before you tonight, the only right she has is a purchase and sales agreement and, and she's not going to buy it. If you turn this down.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
This is contingent upon your approval.
In opposition?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Parker Morgan. I'm an attorney here on behalf of John Bruce, neighboring property owner. Mr. Bruce couldn't be here tonight, but he was present at the Board of Commissioners meeting as relevant on some of the prior things that have been heard on this property. I'd just like to kind of touch on a couple of points that I think there's been some discussion on and I think some of the discussion y'all had earlier tonight is really illustrative here as far as your role as a board. There are certain things that your role is to uphold the requirements of the ordinance and there are certain things you have discretion on. To answer, Mr. Meadows, one of the items that you first asked about, I think is really important here that I want to try and hopefully add a little clarity to because I think it's really important and relevant. The question of how this variance got to be that is now being kind of bootstrapped to allow this large commercial venue, I think is key to understand. In 2013, this four-lot subdivision was sought for approval and it was done so under the expedited subdivision process of the Glen County zoning or the Glen County subdivision regulations. So this is really y'all's first bite at the apple as far as actually looking at the site because the subdivision itself didn't go through the normal process because it qualified for expedited. What's really interesting about the way that regulation is written, the primary way that's set up is for certain commercial, industrial or planned development uses, 801.1 of subdivision regulations with a whole host of commercial uses that you can utilize this procedure for. The way that this had to have been approved, there's a section 802, other expedited subdivisions. And I want to read this to you verbatim from the ordinance.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Just pause a second. Where are you leading this? I'm lost.
I'm getting directly to Mr. Meadows' question about the variance for sanitary sewer.
About a variance?
For the septic tank.
For the septic tank, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, I promise I'm almost there.
Okay.
So the ordinance provides that the one-time division of attractive land into no more than four lots, all of which shall meet the area and width requirements of the zoning ordinance, and that it also must read all of the regulations. Subdivision's eligible for expedited review shall be limited to land within the following zoning districts. There, you get a whole host of residential districts and forest agricultural. So when the variance was approved, then the minutes reflect this, that Commissioner Provenzano asked specifically, you know, was this limited to the four lots? Could any more houses be built along the road? The answer at the time is no. So I don't think there's any doubt that when this was approved as a variance, that the intent and the thought behind it, which was a two-to-one vote on a finance committee, it's a strange procedure for water sewer variances, that then gets stuck on consent agenda at the Board of Commissioners and gets voted through, intended for residential. Here we are five years later with a 300-person commercial development seeking to utilize the same thing. And it's entirely within your purview that the requirement is, is this an acceptable site plan as far as sewer go, sanitary sewer? There's a proposal for an individual septic system, they're saying we can do this because of the variance. You can say, we don't find that acceptable based on the testimony and evidence, we don't feel this is appropriate for a development of this scale, given the proximity to the marsh. That's something you can decide, so I would encourage you to. In addition, looking specifically at the site plan, they note that the drain field, the little box there on the site plan actually says, you know, the final determination will be made later. What we've got here is a proposal. I don't know how you approve this site plan where it's such a paramount issue, especially when you hear the members of the community speaking. wetlands, into the marsh, with the caveat that if necessary, they can do onsite detention. I would strongly encourage you to refer if they do onsite detention, and ask them to amend the site plan, and they come back to you if you so choose that you're not going to expose this to the whole host of permanent issues that they're going to have to meet and to get discharge directed into the marsh. It's just not the smart way to handle this. Final item briefly to touch on, parking. It was mentioned in the staff report that they're seeking grass parking, that forest agricultural requires and need all requirements of the ordinance. Six eleven of the ordinance requires parking to be paved, they've experienced this, and so as presented, it cannot be approved without any requirements for variance in that item. So for those reasons, I'd ask you either deny the application, or at least defer it until it can be corrected.
Thank, thank you. Okay, we have a couple more minutes for the opposed views.
My name is Frank Cullin. I want to bring up an entirely different thing with my fellow over here. Our site plan is three to 500 feet wide. There's your next lot, there's your next lot. That leaves us about 50 yards, maybe less than 50 feet, between here and the property line, the people who own the properties next door, the Bruce family. The nephews are talking about building single-family homes there. There is no sound barrier of any kind between respective homes and the 8,000-foot parking house. We're talking about weddings on weekends. In my career, I went to an awful lot of corporate meetings during the week where they would bring us to something just like this, and we would have fast draw competitions and very loud, fun things, but that was during the week. So there is no hesitation of having it in the week, and I'm sure that these high folks with their due to the property, if they get the opportunity, will rent it out during the week. It could easily be corporate, it could run till 11 o'clock at night in the site plan. There's no sound barrier. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Commissioner's Lisa Norton. It appears on the right side of the site plan that there is a creek, body of water, moving water, and I wanted to inquire if site plans require any agreements or concessions or approval from the Department of Natural Resources. It looks like the building is overlapping the edge of marsh that might fall under the Marsh Protection Act, the Shore Protection Act, and I wanted to inquire, does the applicant have the requirement for approval from Department of Natural Resources before you approve a site plan? Because it would seem that that would be necessary, since this is involving moving water, which would fall under their jurisdiction.
I got your question.
You want me to sit down?
Ma'am.
Are you asking me to sit down?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Carry on.
Okay, I'm, I'm just making the inquiry.
It's not a Q and A back and forth. We know your questions and we'll.
Okay.
We'll get.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other? Sure, we have, according to my watch, four more minutes.
I won't take too long. Norman Applegate. I'm wondering, are you aware of the groundwater level at the area of the septic system? Because the depth of that has a lot to do with, with how well it's going to drain and whether you're going to get contamination or not. And I, I don't know if anyone here has ever managed anything like that, but when you have the public come on a piece of property for fun, the amount of, the amount that they use the septic system is just amazing. We run one of these up, up north, and, and not quite like this, it's an apple picking operation, and the only practical solution is spot-a-pots. That's the only thing that you could, spot-a-pots.
Okay.
Portable toilets.
Hey, porta-jones.
Right.
Gotcha.
Because, because the things people put in, in toilets in, on a, in a, in a public place like that is just unbelievable. And what you have to contend with is, you can't, you just can't imagine the, the problems that you have with that. And I, I think the board should be very aware of that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other opposing views? We've heard about 28 minutes worth, so no additional. Seeing none, being none, we'll close the public comments section. We'll invite the applicants to please come back and offer rebuttal. I'm sure there are some questions here by the commission based on some of the comments we've heard. I just want to offer two things. One, we're not here tonight debating the special use of that. That train has left the station. We're here to discuss the site plan for this facility. I'm sorry, but the IPC, as it was pointed out, denied this application twice for special use. That, that was overridden by the BOC. So we're here tonight not to try and stop it, but to be sure it, it adheres to the ordinance relative to site plan. And while I understand it's very emotional, it's an issue for the Bruce family, I think there were decisions made in the past to split this property up, and somebody got a hold of a piece of it, and now they're selling it on. So while there may have been decades that your family controlled this property, you know, it's now in different hands. So try to keep that in mind. Let's focus on the site plan specifications. I have a couple of questions here, I know the, I know the commission does as well. One was brought up about paving. I wasn't clear, are you going to, are you proposing a pervious paving?
We're proposing grassed parking and asphalt paving for the road.
It is asphalt.
So the whole site, as proposed right now, is 85% pervious.
Right.
And the roadway is proposed as asphalt or hard surface paving. The, the parking is proposed as grassed, and we are seeking a variance for that, as that's required.
Okay. Several comments about stormwater management. Where does the stormwater go now?
So it drains to the marsh in the pre-developed conditions, and there'll have to be a comprehensive stormwater design and drainage plan that's developed, if this moves forward, that's submitted to Glen County, reviewed by the Glen County Engineering Department for conformance with the ordinance, and there'll be a lot of, of working with, with Glen County to develop that plan so that it meets the ordinance. This is a concept in general, it's, it's designed to show that the flow of water will be to the marsh. We certainly are not opposed to detention. Oftentimes, we, we put in detention. This also has a potential to stop the overflow, maybe 100 or 200 feet short of the marsh, and let it flow over grass before it gets into the marsh. We will have to meet the stormwater ordinance, and there are smart engineers that work for Glen County that will make sure that that happens.
Okay, and Mrs. Norton brought up the issue of DNR approval. Are they, are they required in this process?
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, there's, there's no creek on this property. What she was referring to is the offset of the marsh line, that's a 25-foot buffer, and so it's parallel with the CNPA or the DNR line or the marsh line. It, it somewhat looks like a creek, but it's just because that line's parallel with the jurisdiction line. That line has been verified by the DNR, they've been to the site, that is a valid jurisdictional line, and we are outside of the buffer from that line.
Yeah, was her question relative to CMP or with runoff?
You know, she, she mentioned moving water, and I, and she said it looked like there was a creek on the site. I thought that she meant that the, the CNPA line and the buffer looked like a creek, which is, which it is not. And then as far as running water, the, the water in the pre-developed condition runs to the marsh, and it will in the post-developed condition also.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just going to open it up to the commission at large.
There was a question about the, the maritime forest and moving the roundabout to protect the maritime forest, or something about that, that nature? Were you clear about that, what he was talking about?
The, the design is, is as shown, the, the owner has spent a lot of time working with Sea Island's landscape department on an initial design, then, then we took over the site planning for it. You know, th, this is the design that's presented that she would like to, to utilize. It more than three times meets the tree canopy credit requirement with the trees that are being saved. It does take some trees, but we, she, she believes that this is a design that meets her, her intent for, for the use of this property, and certainly the trees and the na, natural aspect are important for her, for her sales.
Ms. Kate.
Mr. Roberts, you referenced the, following the Glen County ordinances in the comprehensive plan. Staff and attorney, do you feel like this, this, what are your thoughts on that? As far as it, how it goes with our comprehensive plan and future land use?
As, as the chairman mentioned a moment ago, the use has been permitted through the special use permit, so that's, that's where, this is a permitted use under our zoning code.
I know, I, I, what do you think? Does it, does it follow? Okay, let me ask you this, does it follow Section 704 in the ordinances?
Excuse me, just point of order, we, we can come back to staff, but we're, we're asking, we're addressing the applicant.
Well, I was making a reference.
Okay.
Through him, because he brought up the, the subject, and so I was asking the staff about it, which is my right.
No, I'm just trying to clarify. But please clarify your question, Ms. Kate.
In reference to Jonathan's point about comprehensive plan and land, and future land use, I understand what you're saying about the special use permit, but I'm wondering your thoughts on how this application applies to Section 704?
It is in compliance with Section 704, as, and, and those ordinances are written and approved by the Board of Commissioners, and it is certainly, it is their, it is their, their judgment and responsibility to determine if it is in compliance with the ordinance. As far as what's before us tonight for the site plan, and whether or not they meet the requirements of 704 and the requirements of a site plan, yes, ma'am, it is my opinion that they do meet the requirements as outlined in the ordinance.
Okay. Additional questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Did you consider onsite sewer treatment as opposed to the drain fields and so forth, septic?
And septic is a form of onsite sewage treatment, and, and I do want to be clear, you know, the primary way to solve the sewer would have been to tie to the public system, it's just not available. This will have to be submitted to the, to the appropriate authority having jurisdiction, which is the Health Department. There will have to be data and plans and specifications submitted, and it will only be able to go forward if we meet their minimum standards.
Okay, so there has been some concern about degradation over time of the drain fields.
Right.
Is there a checkup like every so often by the Health Department on these things? I mean, how does there comply, you know, to make sure that they're up to snuff all the time? And they're not leaching?
Yeah, okay, so there, there's a replacement field that will have to be part of the, of the design, so that if the system ever fails, there's a place onsite that's suitable for another drain field. But also, I think in this case, you've got a proprietor that cannot afford for this thing to fail. I would presume that she would likely pump it before every event, because she, she cannot have a, a single problem with this if she wants to continue to use it weekend after weekend after weekend. So I think in this case, the, the precaution comes from the proprietor to make sure that her, her site is, is not on social media as, as the place not to go to.
Okay, so I appreciate that, but the Health Department, you're saying, has really no, no follow-up on those things?
They, they do when called.
When called?
Yeah.
That was my question. Okay.
That's a good question.
Who calls someone?
So, complainer. I presume a public complaint?
Right.
Okay.
Comments?
Once sewer becomes available, what are the plans?
The onsite sewage treatment through the septic system is a, an expensive investment. If sewer was available now, we certainly would want to hook to the public sewer. It's, with the expense and the investment on the septic system, it would be intended for that to be permanent.
Doesn't the water and sewer ordinance require that you hook up if you're within so many, if it comes within so many feet and it's available?
In the initial development. But not, but not when.
Initial development, not established.
Right. That's right.
Okay, Mr. Meadows?
I think I've heard there is concern about the septic situation, and I'm sure you must be aware that the ability to tie into the sewer system is possible, and the Joint Water and Sewer Commission has a procedure for that. And in fact, they discussed a proposal very near this property last week for 129-lot subdivision, in which they didn't approve it, but they authorized continuation of discussion with the developer to be able to tie into the sewer system by making the necessary capacity available. Is this something that you would be willing to consider doing if that would help resolve some of the concerns of people on this board?
The, the applicant has solved the, the sewer as required by Section 619, and we, we would like to move forward with this. Solving the joint water and sewers global infrastructure problems is not appropriate for this small development. Perhaps a larger development like the one you're referring to has the, the ability to, to take on that task, but this project does not.
I have another question, and I don't know whether this would be more addressed to Mr. Worley, but you're here, and you followed this very well. If this property, if this project, for any reason, would not succeed, under the terms of the special use permit granted by the County Commissioners, would they be able to convert this into a bed and breakfast or a year-round restaurant? What kind of commercial uses could continue to be used on that property?
I would have to defer that to Mr. Worley.
Mr. Meadows, the, the special use permit that was granted on this property was for this specific use, so they would not be able to convert it to a use other than what has been allowed under the special use permit. Now, there, there are a list of permitted uses under FA zoning, but those are, I think the things you described don't fall into that category. So if it was going to be converted to another use, assuming it was something that was subject to a, a special use permit, they would have to come back to this body for a recommendation and then an approval from the Board of Commissioners.
So I could bring back a proposal to make this into a restaurant?
You would, you would have to change the zoning in order to do that. But it, let's just say, six months from now, they decide that an event venue is not working out for them, because it was specifically permitted as an event venue, if they wanted to, to open a restaurant, that would not be allowed use on the property.
I have a question about the trees, and I don't know if you folks are the one, I know that you're very concerned about the trees. My question is, how many trees on the county-owned right-of-way are going to come down to make the entrance possible?
We don't have any proposed within the county right-of-way coming out. No 24-inch or larger trees.
So there will be no trees? I have a question about the trees, and I don't know if you folks are the one, I know that you're very concerned about the trees. My question is, how many trees on the county-owned right-of-way are going to come down to make the entrance possible?
We don't have any proposed within the county right-of-way coming out. No 24-inch or larger trees.
So there will be no trees on the county right-of-way that will be cut?
The requirement is to show the 24-inch and larger. There are no 24-inch and larger shown within the right-of-way that will be cut. Any tree within the county right-of-way, if it was in the way, we'd have to go to the Tree Board, but from the survey that we have of 24-inch and larger trees, there are none.
I'm not talking about 24 inches and larger, I'm talking about trees.
From the information that I have at my disposal, it's 24 inches and larger trees.
Does staff know how many trees on the county-owned right-of-way will be cut?
No, sir.
I asked that question because in one of our previous site plan approvals for a retail store down near the Longview Plaza, we were not given any information about trees being cut on the county-owned right-of-way until the Tree Board came in and informed us that all of the six large oaks on the county-owned right-of-way were going to be cut for the entrance and exit, and we were never informed of that. That's what I want to avoid here. I believe that is a site plan issue.
Yeah, and we show all the 24-inch and larger trees within the right-of-way, none of which are getting cut.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Jonathan. So, Chair will entertain a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion seconded. We have a discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something. As Ms. Hagan knows, I have an argument with the facility, I have an argument with this location, and here we have a vast acreage of forest agricultural land that is, which I think should be subject to some sort of overall land use analysis, and not just piecemeal like we're doing this. And, you know, I think this is a scattered commercial operation. It's got traffic problems, it's got sewer problems, it's got problem after problem after problem, and we're trying to fit something in that doesn't belong. We also forget the fact that the surrounding property owners are private property owners, and you people have forever argued about protecting private property rights, and here you have a family that has all this surrounding land, and you're putting a party house right in the middle of it. What kind of nonsense is that? I am strongly opposed to this, and I hope we unite.
Other comments, sorry, other discussion?
I guess one thing that's, I've heard several times, is that how we're putting this commercial, as Mr. Humphries says, in the middle of this pristine area. And on several occasions, I've heard that this pristine area is being looked at for subdivision development. So I don't think that argument for me is as valid as it would have been had that not been the case.
May I say, Ms. Watson, that's malicious reasoning. You can argue that the move to the marsh, people may come land on site, and that we ought to anticipate that. We don't know what's going to be the alternative uses. We know what this is, and it's not appropriate.
Yeah, we're not, okay, sorry. Other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to be clear, I'm not opposed to this project. In fact, I like some of the design elements of it, but it's in the wrong place, and I think it's the wrong shape of the parcel for the use. I mean, this parcel is only, what'd they tell us, 300 feet wide. They plan to fully occupy right up to the property lines, and I agree that the owners of the property on either side, who are the adjacent owners, also have property rights, which I'm concerned this project would have a potential negative impact on their property rights. I'm very much concerned about the camel's nose into the tent regarding starting commercial uses in a forest agricultural area, particularly when we have our comprehensive plan that's under discussion, and it has specific conversations regarding this neighborhood. I'm one of those who feels that granting the special use permit was wrong for the same reasons that one of the Board of Commissioners stipulated. I think that perhaps with regard to the site plan, what I've said was, I think that there's too much of a narrow site occupied right up to the boundaries. I think that's incompatible with land use. I think that the septic is a real problem, and there is a process to work with the joint water and sewer to address the capacity issue. I think that should be pursued. There were a number of excellent suggestions that were made to us here tonight. There are others that we could talk about that could make this a better project even on this site. I would be amenable to deferring to pursue those in discussion, but I could not support the project and the motion in the way it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. This is very controversial application, understanding that we have a motion, a second, and we've had discussion. Would anybody be opposed to allow the applicant to offer additional comments?
I don't know if I'm opposed to that. I'd like to ask Mr. Worley, would you please give us the direction regarding, the Board is in the process of discussing and acting on a motion. Is it appropriate to be asking audience members to participate in that conversation?
Commissioners, once, traditionally, once a motion is made and a second is made, then it's up for discussion amongst the members of the Board. Now, if y'all would like as a body to decide to allow the applicant to do that, you can, but traditionally, once there's a motion on the floor and a second has been made, then the discussion is limited to the members of the body who are considering that motion.
Okay, is there an interest to pursue that? Sounds like we would need a motion?
I mean, you could ask if anyone has objections, if, you know, that's the less formal way to do it, or you can be more formal, make a motion and vote on that.
Okay. Do we have any objections for the applicant to speak? No, you're not opposed?
No.
I think the more information we can glean from the applicant, it's to benefit everyone. Ms. Hagan?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the statement that was made, we don't know what would happen. I understand this land has been in that family's, in the Bruce family for a while. However, the two lots to the north of the plat that everybody's saying we need to protect, it is currently being marketed for an overcrowded housing development. Carly, you're very familiar with those. So to say that this isn't a better protection for the oak trees, if you think that those oak trees aren't going to be clear-cut, I was approached, when it was heard that I was purchasing this land, by the owner of the two plats to the north, stating that they wanted to join with this plat to clearcut the land and turn it into quarter-acre lots for, I mean, it is currently being marketed for that. So to me, this protects it and is a much better use than another overcrowded housing development that would put more strain on the current infrastructure, and it would be less traffic, as far as I'm concerned. But it is currently being marketed for that. I was approached for that purpose, and some people in this audience also received a mail-out from the Realtor that represents those two north plats that are directly next to this parcel, that are in the Bruce family, too. So you can't say that you want to keep it and protect it while you're also marketing it for a development. That's just what I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Willis?
I recall Commissioner Murphy speaking at the Board of Commissioners meeting, stating that these three parcels could probably have, I think the staff said, approximately 48 homes, which would mean a lot more trees being cut to facilitate that for roads, and a whole lot more square footage in terms of houses. So that's why I'm supporting this, is because it's going to reduce the density. You put 50 houses up there, you increase density, you increase traffic, not just on the weekend, on every day. And that's what I've looked at this project for, as a way to reduce the density for the future. Now, I know people disagree with that, but I'd much rather have a facility like this that might have an event once a week or maybe twice a week at best than 50 homes with traffic going up and down Lawrence Road on a daily basis, all during the day. So that's why looking at this is to decrease the opportunity for more density.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd address one thing. When an application comes before us, my job is to make sure it follows the Glen County zoning and ordinances, and use common sense, but that's my primary job, and I treat every application equally held up against those ordinances as we are required to do. I do my best, and I think I've been consistent in everything, all applications that I have voted on, because I hold them all to the same standard, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? I'll call for the vote. We have a motion to approve the application as presented. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. So the motion is denied?
Motion failed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, a procedural question.
Yeah, we have no recommendation.
Yeah, just a point of order here. So the motion failed. We, do we need to?
Yes, sir, you have four possible actions, you need to take one of those actions.
Okay. Sorry, Ms. Meadows.
That was my question, the four possible actions.
Right, okay. The Chair will entertain another motion, please.
I move to deny application SP 3694, Fort Farm, because it fails to comply with the county ordinance, Section 619.48.
Okay, do we have a, sorry.
Do you mind telling what the ordinance says? What is it?
It's the ordinance to approve the site plan.
Do you tell what it is?
Excuse me, can we get a second, and then we can open up for discussion?
Second, okay.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Yes, I would like for someone to review that ordinance, tell what it is.
Okay, so there's a request to understand 619.4, which is part of the motion to deny.
You want me to read it, or you want me to read it?
You can read it or explain it, either way.
I can address that. So I believe that Commissioner Humphries specifically cited 619.4A, and those are the criteria that the planning commission uses to determine whether a site plan should be approved or not. So basically, it's the list of one through nine of criteria you should look at in judging a site plan.
In your staff report, this is under the subheading of findings, starting on page two and continuing on to page three.
Ms. Brooks, if it would help, that's the same motion and the same reference to the commission, to the ordinance that we used to deny the Dollar General. It was upheld by the courts recently.
Other discussion comments?
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Worley, that if this motion to deny prevails, how long would it be before the applicant can return with a new application? The second part of my question is, if a motion to defer would pass, how long would the applicant have to revise their proposal and bring it back for consideration? Thank you.
So the answer to the first question is, if you deny the site plan, then there is no time limit on, there's no waiting period for them to reapply. If you defer the application, the best practice would be to defer it to a specific meeting. You can always, or give some guidance as to what you want to see before it comes back to you. So for instance, you could defer it to your next meeting, your next regular meeting, or, you know, if you had something specific you wanted to see changed, you could, but we need some trigger to bring it back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question that might seem a little bit out of the box, but I think that we're struggling to find a solution to a complicated and a complex controversial project, as you said. Would it be in order for us to have any indication from the applicant whether or not they would prefer to have a motion to deny, or whether or not they would prefer this body defer to a date specific in the event that that motion might prevail? Thank you.
I'm not sure I follow you.
I'd like to spring your question.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a motion to deny and a second, and it's based on failure to comply with Section 619.4, which is in our package, pages two and three for this application, the staff report. Help me, staff, I don't see anything on here that said it did not meet. Can you put that up?
I'm sorry, put up the findings?
The checklist, the findings, yes, please.
It's actually not, that detail's not in the presentation, it is in your staff report.
Okay. So we have nine, we have a findings checklist of nine issues relative to 619. I don't see anything on here that says it failed to meet.
Your staff's opinion.
Am I missing something?
No, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, there's a motion on the floor that has been seconded, and so your opinion is not really...
We're in discussion, thank you, Ms. Kate.
...by all this time.
I'm just struggling with, where are we not in compliance?
I think the ones who made the motion should delineate exactly where it is that's not compliant, that would cause it to be denied. Just taking the whole section, saying the whole section is not relevant. Where is it where this site plan is not compliant with ordinance?
You can't tell what this motion is.
Excuse me, please maintain order. Commission is trying to work through this.
Well, isn't that correct, that they've got to, when you deny something like this, you've got to give a reason why it's denied that's relevant to the ordinance?
As Commissioner, as Mr. Humphries stated earlier, I think y'all denied them based on the same reference before, and that has been upheld by the court as an adequate...
At the discretion to say that they don't think it's compliant, basically.
Right, because those are the criteria that you look at and make a determination as a body as to whether you feel like those criteria have been met.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Willis, we've been informed many times that it's the role of our Board here to determine whether or not we believe in our judgment that the information was adequate. was adequate.
So it strikes me that we're looking for a reason to deny it because we're not in agreement with the sup, which was already determined by the board of commissioners, very clearly, five to one approval on that. And now we want to throw out a very subjective, as best I can tell, you don't have a good reason, so you're just not with it.
Mr. Chairman, I strongly disagree with your reasoning on that because I made a specific motion or a specific recommendation, and it's not your rule to determine whether that's appropriate or not.
Thank you.
I call a question.
You have to vote to call. If you're cut off debate, you have to have a motion to cut off debate.
Chairman's done it all night.
Be quiet.
Quiet, please.
Please let us work through this.
I understand we're going back and forth, and we have policies and procedures. I would like to know at what point can we allow citizens to come to voice their opinion for and to voice their opinion against? What's the purpose of them voicing their opinion if we don't ever take any of it in consideration in addition to what is written here before us? Just trying to get some clarity here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any more discussion? Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor for to deny the site plan as stated, please raise your hand. All those opposed to the dial? Thank you. All right, motion carries, four to three.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since I stated very specifically that I was not necessarily opposed to this project, and then I gave the specific reasons of concern that I had, I want to make sure that everyone understands that the motion was as presented. I feel that there could have been some modifications that could have made this more palatable. However, that was not the proposal that was presented in front of us. So I voted to deny. Thank you.
Okay, I believe there's, is there any further business? Okay. Do we need a move for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.